Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening. We are going to start with a county meeting tonight, so I will turn it over to Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Oops, pardon, I had a little echo. Okay, I think that's better. Thank you, Brooke. A call to order the July 23, 2025 County Commissioners Meeting at 5:31. First announcement is county commission meeting is being audio and video recorded. And number two, recognition for Barry G. Rector for over 25 years of service to Nantucket community as a member of the Planning Board and Nantucket Planning and Economic Development Commission. I'm going to ask RJ from Rep. Mowgli's office to come up, Dave Iverson, Chair of the Planning Board, and planning staff if they'd like to, Leslie and Megan, to present citations from the House of Representatives to Barry, and of course, Mr. Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Dave Iverson. We're gathered here to thank and acknowledge Barry Rector for 25 years of unrelenting service to this island. We have something here from the House. We're halfway there. We have one from the Senate coming too. We haven't seen it yet, but it reads, "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Barry G. Rector in recognition of over 25 years of serving the Nantucket Planning Board and Nantucket Planning and Economic Development Commission. The entire membership extends their very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors." Well done. You will be sincerely missed.
I'll miss you guys.
But you know where we are.
Thank you, Barry. Are you waiting for me? Want to do a photo, Mr. Rector?
Let's do it.
Okay. Do I have a... Erica, may I please ask you to take that? Photo? You want to do your photo? Oh, they should. Thank you to everyone. Barry.
Think you were going to get me out of here this easily. You know, it's interesting. Thank you so much, by the way. Wow. Wow. That's the only way I can express that. I knew a few days ago this was going to come up, and mine starts to race. How do you encapsulate 25 years into just a few moments worth of time? It's been an incredibly great ride. I appreciate the opportunity, and a big thanks to the community for allowing me to be part of the endeavors of both the Planning Board and the Planning Commission. So many people were so supportive in that process, and I really appreciate it. And to kind of walk away knowing that over the period of time, we were able to do, I think, some incredibly positive things for the community feels so great. Thank you all for what you did, and I really have to acknowledge my peers who were here. Leslie, Megan, my board members who have been incredibly supportive of me and worked with me. One person who's not here, who I am going to mention because he was an incredibly great mentor along the way, was Andrew Vorse. We'll still keep in touch with him, but he was a very good, positive influence on being able to do this. So, life moves on. Sometimes it's time to step aside and let other people take the reins and see where it goes to. I'm a big fan in terms of succession planning. So I don't know. I have no idea what the future holds in store. I don't know if this means I can ever come back or not. I mean, this is kind of like, okay, you've done your t- no, you can't have anymore. I'm sorry. And I don't know. I thought about that for a second. Okay, I guess I won't be coming back anymore. I'm sure right now at that magic moment, about 800 people on the island are getting down on their knees, fully in their hands, saying, "Thank God. Thank God." But I would, you know, again, the future's unclear and cloudy, but I really appreciate the opportunity, and we'll see where life's journey takes us. Again, thank you so much, everyone. I really appreciate this. It's very meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry, for all your years of service to the town and county. Item number three, public comment for county commissioners for items not otherwise on the agenda. We will be having a public comment under Select Board, so if there's anybody here for that, stay tuned. There is no new business. Next up is approval of minutes and warrants. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. Moved by Malcolm, second by Brooke. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Passes unanimously. Official business. Number one, Steamship Authority. Update on activities. Tonight, we have here Rob Raney, who is the Steamship Authority Board Member, and Nat Lowell, who is the Port Council Member for Nantucket. And also online is Mr. Bob Davis, who is General Manager of the Steamship. And I'll kick it over to Rob for an update on what's going on with the Steamship.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I just wanted to say before we start that I am every day extremely humbled and honored to be representing Nantucket on the Steamship Authority. It is a challenge every day. It is a relatively thankless position, but it is something that is very rewarding in a weird sort of thankless way. I think what I'm going to do is have Mr. Davis touch on a few relevant topics that concern us, and then we'll take questions and comments. And then if Mr. Lowell wants to say anything, he can do that, too.
Good evening, Mr. Davis. Please go ahead.
Good evening. Thanks for inviting us today. So, just some quick updates in terms of our activities. As you know, we have the new two-ice vessels, the Barnstable's on the Nantucket run currently. You'll be having the Aquinor as well as the Barnstable later this year. And we expect in October to be doing the commissioning ceremony for the Montemoy, so we'll have all three of them in service by the end of the year. This is an effort to try to update our fleet, to try to stay ahead of any issues, replacing 40-plus-year-old vessels with these newer vessels. We do have, you know, our long-term capital plan has some design and engineering work to be done this year, next year, on a new build, but we need to be looking at funding sources for that. The terminal project, we have a feasibility study also in our capital budget to start, to start looking at that facility and what we can do to improve it and make it secure for the next 40 to 50 years. And we'll be wanting to work closely with the town on that project, of course. So, but that's, we still haven't determined who will be doing the feasibility study for us, so. I'm sorry, I misplaced my notes here, so, kind of rambling. We do have, the 2026 operating schedule has been out for public comment. We expect to bring that to the Board and Port Council at their August meetings for approval for the Nantucket route. That essentially means the same schedule as what you've had this year with the, in the summertime, the Nantucket, the Eagle, the Woods Hole, and the Barnstable for most part of the summer. There may be a time period where the Montemoy will be taking its place, but that's the service levels that we anticipate for next year as well. Through the first week of July, service is up passenger-wise, is up 2% on the Nantucket route. Automobile traffic is up just under 5%, and truck traffic is up about 2.5%. So, it's unlike last year where we did have to restrict some service because of the crewing issues we had. Hopefully, we resolve those. We've agreed to, all of our unions have new collective bargaining agreements, and we look forward to providing the service that the island expects. There are a couple of things on the legislative front. I'll just point out that, one of which is, well, there's two of them, to increase the embargation fee. One of the bills is to increase it from 50 cents to a dollar. The other one is to increase it from 50 cents to $2. Those have, haven't gone to any hearings yet at this point, so with a week or so to go in the session before the end of the month, I'm not sure whether those will be acted upon until, at this point, or whether they'll be taken up again in the fall.
Mr. Davis, do you have any comments on the new reservation system and the rollout and how that's planned and timetable and all that?
Yeah, no, thank you for bringing that up. I grabbed the wrong folder when I headed out of the office, so that was one of the things I wanted to bring up. We did award, the Board awarded a new contract to a vendor to update our reservation system. It's been a process we've been going through now for, over the past year. Our request for responses were issued back in December. We had 26 firms that took out the bid package. Nine firms submitted proposals. There was approximately 750 different criteria points that they had to respond to. Those were reviewed. The top four candidates, firms, were interviewed. There was a day-long demo interview process, and at the end, a company called Idea, which is from Italy, was the consensus top selection. They do operations such as British Columbia ferries, CalMac ferries, and a host of other companies. So, they're well-established, particularly in Europe, in Canada, so will be one of the first clients that they have in the U.S. We're looking forward to that. We've already started. There's been some meetings already with them. We expect that one of the things we're looking at is to have that rollout for passenger, the passenger, the INO service in time for next spring with the automobile reservations taking place the fall of 2026 for the 2027 season.
Okay. Any other Nantucket-specific things that we should be aware of that you can think of?
There was one other legislative one from a staff perspective. We're remaining neutral on it, but, you know, whether the county is undoubtedly aware about the bill that's regarding term limits.
Okay. Do you know its status in the House and Senate and where it's at?
It was sent for hearing, but there has not been any action on that as of yesterday. I had not seen that any hearing had been scheduled.
Okay. For the public's knowledge, is this something that the Steamship is taking a position on, or is it, how's that work?
Well, in terms of, from the Steamship perspective, staff is remaining neutral on this. We don't have a voice on who the communities choose to represent their communities on our Board and Port Council, but, you know, it is something that, you know, the communities need to be aware of and make a determination on their part on how that impacts their representation.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Rob Burnett, any comments?
Thank you, Chairman, and I just want to thank this community for the support I've been given with my last two months. I have never felt so honored to be a Nantucket resident. So, and you all know who you are. I have had more messages of support in the last six or seven weeks than I could get in my whole life, so thank you. Yes, so this topic, I think the best way to approach this is, you know, we're out here 26 miles, and we don't know what's going on over there anymore like we used to. And there's a lot going on over there on the other island, and Woods Hole and Falmouth. And we're over here just happy the boat's running and trying to get to work every morning and get to the Cape when we need to. But this is serious, this, what Bob is talking about. And we need, I think, to schedule a future county meeting to discuss this as an official, you know, item vote, et cetera, on this whole term limits thing. I mean, I have a bunch of notes, but if it's not on the agenda, I don't feel comfortable talking about it if that's not appropriate. So, you tell me, you want to keep it brief, or you just want to discuss a future meeting about it?
Yeah, I think what would be most appropriate is for myself and the Vice Chair Malcolm to put that on another, a subsequent county meeting, and we can discuss that, and you can submit your notes, and it will be in our packet, and then we can have a discussion.
And I would suggest, absent of some of you, some of the stuff that comes in from over, you know, with the people that are involved in this. And I think, as far as the votes over there, I gather all the information of each six towns and what they're voting on on this, because a lot of votes have been cast already. And I think that you'll find that it's not a slam dunk by any stretch. So, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Nat. Good to see you. Rob, anything else?
No, I don't really have anything to add. I just wanted to thank everybody, and I appreciate your support and your trust and confidence in the both of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, anything else?
No, I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update and continue to work with the town on projects as we move forward, so.
Okay. Thank you for being here this evening, and Nat and Rob will talk about putting it on a future agenda. Appreciate you both being here this evening. Moving along, Commissioners' comments reports. Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Brooke, second by Dawn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Counties adjourned. Madam Chair?
Okay. We will call the Select Board meeting officially to order at 5:49. We'll accept the agenda. I just, it was requested under Citizen Departmental Committee Request and Reports. If we move three and four before one and two, is everyone okay with that? Okay, otherwise, there shouldn't be any changes, and I will turn it over to the Town Manager for announcements. Libby?
Thank you. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. Mandatory outdoor water use restrictions remain in effect due to a Level 1 drought condition. There are mandatory restrictions right now, which limit lawn irrigation to two designated days per week. That is based on street address, and no irrigation allowed Friday through Sunday. And there are updates and specific information and details about this on the town website, as noted on the Select Board agenda. Free tours of the Brant Point Shellfish Hatchery are running on Tuesdays at 11:00 a.m. throughout the summer. Signups can be made two weeks in advance online, and again, that information's on the Select Board agenda. The Take It or Leave It facility is accepting latex paint for recycling on Wednesdays and Sundays. And the Universal Waste Shed, which is right next to the Take It or Leave It, accepts batteries on Tuesdays and Saturdays from 8:00 to noon. Please recycle both of those things. Announce applications received for the Nantucket Historical Commission. Erica will read the names, and you can say the rest of that one.
Great. Thank you. So, we have three seats available, one seat with a term ending 2027, two seats with terms ending 2028. Next, our next meeting, August 6, is when the Board will be making their appointments, following the applicants being able to come and introduce themselves and speak on their behalfs. So, we have seven applicants. Abby DiMolina, who's the incumbent, she is seeking the 2028 seat. Linda Williams, a new applicant, 2028 seat. Caroline Bolzer, new applicant, the 2027 seat. Lee Tesser, new applicant, 2027 seat. Barbara Halsted, new applicant, 2028 seat. Betsy Tyler, new applicant, no preference on a seat. And Kami, I'm sorry, Amy Cohane, new applicant, no preference on the seat.
Thank you, Erica. Sorry. There is no Select Board meeting on Wednesday, July 30, next Wednesday, and the Board's next meeting will be Wednesday, August 6.
Sorry, my computer's not charging. I'm going to have to fix that. Are there any opening Select Board announcements or comments?
I've got one comment I was asked to make, and that is to be careful if you're driving or biking. My son's girlfriend had a good friend of hers who was shouted at, she was riding her bike over 20 miles an hour on the road. She was shouted at, you know, expletives, get off the road. She got off the road onto the bike path, and when she got onto the bike path, two e-bikes mowed into her, and she broke a collarbone and got smashed up pretty good. And so, I think people need to be respectful, and I've had two different employees in the hospital, one I told you about about a month ago that had serious brain injury. She's okay now, but still has trouble, and another one who broke a collarbone. So, these things are going on every day. People need to take a deep breath, drive their cars. The state law here is four feet, you know, you can't pass within four feet. Bikes are allowed to drive to a breast right down the road. That's legal, you know, so people have to, the bikes share the road, cars have to share the road, trucks have to share the road. And we have to realize that when someone gets hit, they get really hurt, seriously, seriously hurt. And so, I think that it's really important that everybody, I know it's busy here, and it's hot, and everyone's in an hurry, everyone's just going to take a deep breath and be careful and care about each other, please. Thank you.
Anybody else? Next up, we do not have any public comment from last week that's ready to be addressed yet. We do post everything on the website as it becomes available. Are there any public comments for items that are otherwise not on our agenda for discussion? Good evening. And we do have to limit these to three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Penny Dye, and I have a question for your Board about the community impact fee that was put into effect last October, October 1 of 2024. This is a 3% fee on those people who own two or more properties that they rent on a short-term basis. And we were told, because you deferred the implementation of this, that leases done prior to October 1, 2024, would not be subject to this fee. The Department of Revenue does not agree with that. And so, we need a letter from the Finance Department or from you to the DOR stating that you delayed implementation of that. Thank you.
Hi, Emmy Kilver. Is this working? I have a comment on STR enforcement. Is that permissible at this time in the meeting? Okay. I'd like to read a letter that I sent to the Select Board. It didn't make it into the meeting packet. I also sent a similar letter to NAREB, and I have not received a reply as of yet, so I'll just read the letter. Dear members of the Select Board, as you will have read, Nantucket Neighborhoods First has asked NAREB and the members of Nantucket's real estate community to contribute to addressing Nantucket's STR challenges by limiting STR properties featured on their websites to those with Nantucket registration numbers. This is only a partial solution because it does not include platforms and other ways people advertise STRs such as vacation clubs. Accordingly, we would like to request that you and the town take the appropriate steps to notify the administrators of these entities of our recently effective laws under Chapter 123, requiring property registration to STR, and Chapter 338, which prohibits the advertisement of property listings to STR that do not have the required Nantucket registration number, and also to ask for their assistance with compliance with Nantucket's rules and regulations in the same way that we have asked the Nantucket real estate community to be a part of the STR solution. Our understanding of the platforms is that they do make an effort to work constructively with municipalities, but in our conversations with two of the largest platforms, we've been advised that they have not, they have received no notice of Nantucket's rules that are now in effect. If we as a community and you as the elected members of this Select Board, along with the real estate community, can take positive steps towards enforcing our existing STR laws, rules, and regulations, a zoning solution will be easier to accomplish. We thank you for your consideration and look forward to your reply. And this was sent on, I signed it, but it was on behalf of Nantucket Neighborhoods First.
Thank you. I have Meg Ruley online, and then I'll come back to you.
Hi, thank you so much. My name's Meg Ruley. I'm a resident, and I live over on 12 Tom's Way, and I'm just following up. I sent an email this afternoon just asking the Nantucket Select Board to expedite the implementation of year-round traffic safety and parking solutions with enforcement for Tacoma Way, Amelia Drive, Wait Drive, and the surrounding areas. You know, the town is continuing to allow Amelia Drive to function as a dangerous two-way, one-lane road, and recently with the creation of Wait Drive, and in particular the Wait Drive connector, people are starting to park on either side of Wait Drive. I saw that this morning, and I emailed you photos so you could see as well. There's no signage or yellow lines indicating if there are rules along the connector, and maybe you can park there. I don't know. The initial design of Wait Drive was to be a two-lane road, but since the new 52-bed seasonal dormitory opened, and that only has 11 designated parking spots, and then the town parking lot reopened in May with 200 available parking spots, everything is full, and so people have nowhere to go, and they're parking regularly on Wait Drive. Moreover, when the parking lot is full, we're seeing large trucks off- Moreover, when the parking lot is full, we're seeing large trucks often parking along that grass lot, and I believe NEPA said there are not supposed to be any parking in that area, as well as leaving large trucks on Amelia Drive. There's no enforcement, there's no ticketing. I haven't seen any kind of plan, and so I'm just asking the Select Board to please consider implementing a traffic safety and parking solution in this area, because Tacoma Green is coming up, it's in the pipeline, and that's going to have 60 more housing units and another 100-plus parking spots, and we're already at capacity, and this is year-round, not just seasonally. So thank you so much, and I hope this is an agenda item in the future.
Thank you. Penny?
Yeah, thank you. Just quickly, my name is Penny Dye. I'm just responding to Ms. Kilvert's comment. She, her email was responded to by the Secretary of NAREB on Tuesday, July 15th, at 5:32 p.m. Additionally, we've had education with the Health Department about the requirements of the new regulations, and our members are well-versed in what we're supposed to be doing, and we are working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's not start a back-and-forth.
I'm not, I just, for the record, I did not receive that response from NAREB.
Thank you. So we'll make sure she gets that. Is Campbell's?
Good evening, sir. I didn't want to interrupt whatever was happening there. I do appreciate Emmy's letter. I did read it in Anki Mirror, and I know that on a national level, all of those big Airbnb-type things do have registries, and other towns do send them information, so this would not be something odd or irregular to receive a letter from you. Okay, that has nothing to do with what I came here for, though. Okay, I wanted to express my distress over the new website, the town's website. On July 13th, I tried to go in, as some of you may know, I attend many of the planning board meetings, at least as many as I can, and I typically download and save in my iBooks the agenda, the packet, and the staff report, all separately, but they all come in, you know, whether it's 500 pages, 700, whatever it is, and then it doesn't matter where I am, I don't need to be connected to the internet in order to read it. Well, I found that on, with the new website, I was unable to download anything unless I wanted to page-by-page store that on my iBooks, and there wasn't any way I had the time nor the inclination for it. So great, I did make comment at that month's planning board, and gratefully, Billy Sod did go over that with me. I just had a few questions regarding that, because I knew nothing about the website change, so I sort of wanted to know, like, who instigated that? Were department heads and staff part of creating this new website? Was there, I don't believe there was any public input, I'm sure that there's lots of people that would tell you, you know, issues that they had with the old website. And then I'm sort of wondering, before this launch, was there a, like a mock website set up with a new program for people to try and get feedback and then, you know, relaunch or anything like that? Because it seems to me, one day, everything worked for me, and the next, it didn't. Now, another thing quickly before my time runs out is transparency. I keep hearing that we, and I believe that we do have a lot of transparency, you just need to know where to find the stuff. So the user interface on your website needs to be really, really consumer-friendly. It's great that administrators and staff who get paid by the hour have time to search and find everything, but for those of us that are work or just are trying to follow up on something, it takes a lot of clicking and a lot of time, and I'd just quickly like to say, I do appreciate the way you put the website references, sorry for going over time, in this packet so that it will be easier to find by using the website. Of course, if one is not using the packet, then.
Thank you, Campbell.
Matthew Peale. So I would love to get some information on what is going on with, and I'm not sure this necessarily followed, I don't know who this would fall under, but what is going on with the cell service on this island? And it's just been so inconsistent and terrible lately, and I feel like we are moving from something that's just a nuisance into something that's more of a public health concern, because, you know, not very many people have landlines anymore, you know, it's, I had an employee the other day, they got hit by a car over here, and now there's dead spots where there used to not be dead spots. You're out at the beach, you can't get a, you know, a cellphone signal, what, like I said, I don't know who it falls under, but I'm sure the community would love to know, is it a capacity issue? Because if somebody's on the beach, and I know emergency response professionals would tell you, you know, that if somebody's trying to get a hold of 911, they can't get through or they can't, you know, explain to the operator, because the phone keeps cutting out of their exact location, things like that, that's a difference, literally the difference between life and death, when there's a delay in response time. So I just feel like it's 2025, you know, it's, we, we're on such a small island, why is the cell service so inconsistent? And so it's, you know, good in some spots, one day, four, I don't know. So that's my public comment. I just, I would love to see if you guys can look into it, investigate it, what's going on there, and if we need more towers, do we need more towers? And so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Rick Atherton online.
Dawn, thank you. I hope you can hear me.
Yep, go ahead, Rick.
Right, just to sort of follow up on Campbell Sutton's comment, I missed the very beginning of her statement, but, but I have found the new Agenda and Minutes website, really, it may help get PDFs of your agenda and package for the current meeting, but if you wanted to go back and look in 2016 and do a search for what minutes had been filed for any one of the committees, to do that on the current, with the current procedure is virtually impossible. And I would encourage you to seriously consider reverting back to the prior website, which at least in my experience worked just fine. So thank you, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Who has public comments tonight? I'm sure we'll have responses to these before next meeting. Okay, seeing none. There's no new business, approval of minutes, warrants, and pending contracts. If there aren't any questions or comments?
So moved?
Sarah Second?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Consent items?
We have one gift acceptance. To the Fire Department, a gift of a new flagpole, complete with associated lighting and installation valued at $6,000 from the Nantucket Rotary Club, from the Nantucket Fire Department Headquarters at 4 Fairgrounds Road. I make a motion to accept the gift for its designated purpose with thanks to the donors.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any pose that carries unanimously. Next up, we have Citizen Departmental Committee Requesting Reports, and we are going to skip down to start with number three.
Good evening, Kristy Ferentzela, the Housing Director, and I have Dylan Machampell, our Deputy Housing Director. I'm just going to have Erica pull up her word. Perfect. So we're here tonight on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust to provide a quarterly update on items that the trust covered from April to June of 2025. Next slide, please, thank you. So starting out with our kind of an overview of what we'll be speaking about tonight, we wanted to first really look at the successes of the trust, and we've been able to add subsidized housing inventory, items to our subsidized housing inventory. We've added three units over the last few months, bringing our total to 6.55% towards the total 10%. We've also been able to award six families with closing cost assistance, and this helps families as they're closing on a deed-restricted unit and covering those costs associated with closing. We awarded one Covenant Formation Assistance, and I'm going to be talking about that a little bit more, because that's a program that's underutilized, and we want to make sure the community knows about it. We've hired Dylan, which has been a great asset in addition to our team, and Dylan's going to walk through our town meeting successes this past year, and then we'll final, at the end, we'll go through our projects and the new deed restriction pilot program.
Thank you, Kristy. Thank you. So as Kristy said, I'm going to go over some of the key results and policy victories that came out of this year's town meeting. First, the town unanimously approved and accepted the Seasonal Communities designation. We're still waiting on finalized guidelines, which should be coming next month in September, but, but the Seasonal Communities designation will add key tools to support affordable housing, including year-round housing occupancy restrictions and an increase in property tax exemption for year-round homeowners. Second, we adopted an inclusionary zoning bylaw, which requires larger residential developments to include a percentage of units that are affordable and year-round, so specifically for every five units built, one must be attainable, meaning that it's restricted for up to, at least up to 240% area median income, or AMI. Next, voters approved a home role petition for a transfer fee on high-end property sales to fund affordable housing initiatives. The way that works is it's half a percent on any sale, on any sale over 2 million, on just the amount over 2 million. And Kristy, the Affordable Housing Trust Chair, Brian Sullivan, and Tucker Holland, who's the former Municipal Housing Director and leader of the Nantucket Land Trust, will be testifying this Tuesday, the 29th, at the State House in favor of the real estate transfer fee. A $5 million bond was approved under the Community Preservation Act for housing projects up to 100% area median income, and Kristy presented, and I'll say did a really, a really great presentation this morning at the Annual Community Preservation Committee Forum, CPC Forum, and that's recorded if anybody would like to learn more about exactly where those funds are going. Voters also approved a $6.5 million general override for affordable housing, and a citizen petition to strip funding was, was rejected. And lastly, we have new zoning bylaw definitions for attainable housing and year-round housing. So attainable housing is defined as at or below 240% area median income, and year-round housing, we define as primary residence for not less than 10 months of the year. So these new definitions provide clarity for future projects and help maintain that important distinction between affordable versus attainable. And now, next slide, please, and I'll go back to Kristy.
Thank you. So we wanted to talk about the Covenant Formation Assistance Program for a second, and just highlight what this opportunity is for island residents. So owners are eligible to apply for an 18-month 0% loan, and this helps cover the initial costs of creating a Nantucket Housing Needs Covenant home. This is a zoning tool in our zoning bylaws that allow you to create a covenant lot and sell it at a restricted unit that would stay deed-restricted in perpetuity. And this is managed, this, both the Covenant Program and this Covenant Formation Assistance Program is managed through Housing Nantucket, and homeowners can find out more information on their website, but it's up to $10,000 that provide, is provided to eligible residential properties. I'm just getting a little feedback. So we just wanted to highlight this program and encourage residents that are interested in perhaps creating and carving off, carving off a covenant program, to look into this program, as the funds are distributed by the Affordable Housing Trust, and then upon the sale of the covenant lot, the trust is repaid, and so we can reuse this $10,000 over and over again to create additional units. Next slide.
So we wanted to share that this year's recipient of the annual Dr. Howard Dickler Housing Advocacy Award is Beth Ann Meehan, who is professionally and personally committed to community engagement and is a fierce advocate for Nantucket's year-round community. With the award comes a small honorarium, which Beth Ann chose to dedicate to the Nantucket Housing Authority, who's using the funds to plant daffodils on their properties. So congratulations and thank you, Beth Ann. Next slide, please.
Thank you. So next, I'm going to cover housing production and our progress towards safe harbor. So for anyone who's not familiar with the terms, safe harbor is under the Massachusetts Chapter 40B. The town is required to deed-restrict 10% of our year-round housing stock, which is defined every decennial census by the U.S. government, and we are aiming every year to add at least 1% towards our housing stock, or 32 units, and that provides us what we call a safe harbor, which allows us to deny an unfriendly 40B. So the town has worked to stay in safe harbor since 2019 and the kickoff of the Neighborhood First funds that were approved at town meeting. Next slide, please. So those initial kickoff funds in 2019, you can see, had a real impact in boosting our subsidized housing inventory list. Since 1985, we were trending at about 1% to 2% on the subsidized housing inventory list, and since 2019, we've consistently added projects through either construction or, construction of new property, or being able to convert existing structures into affordable housing. And so right now, we stand at 405 units. As I mentioned earlier, that's 6.55%. By the end of 2026, we're projected to be at 590 units, so we're very close to hitting that 10% goal of 618 units. And I just really wanted to point this out to the community, because I feel that we've been very focused as a trust to continue to move along projects, and we haven't stopped to really showcase what we've done and how many heads and beds we've created. So I really, I enjoyed putting the data together with Dylan to show us how we've added these units over time, and we're on track to hitting that 10% goal. Next slide, please. So this was an ad that our communications team has put together to, again, really showcase the successes of the Affordable Housing Trust, and since 2019, all of these projects have utilized funds that have been approved at town meeting, either through CPC funds or the overrides and borrowing authorizations, and all of this has been able, has been utilized to create affordable and attainable year-round housing solutions, both rental and homeownership. And I really like to look at this and say, that first initial $20 million from Neighborhood First was utilized to kind of catapult us into all of these projects that have had a significant impact on creating affordable and attainable housing. Next slide, please.
So now I'm just going to go through a few of the current ongoing projects. If you could go to the next slide, please. So first, the Habitat for Humanity, which is over on Wait Drive, not far from here, so six homeownership units. Four will be completed this fall, and additional two will be finished in spring of 2026. The development at Richmond Meadows 1, this is the first phase of their rental development, and it's 28 rental units. These homes were previously market-rate units, and now they are affordable, so it's an example of our work focused on converting existing structures to affordable housing. And third, Tacoma Green, this project is currently underway, and we actually cleared a big hurdle this morning when Holkeen received clearance from U.S. Fish and Wildlife to continue the development. So the plan is to close October 15th, and ultimately Tacoma Green will be home to 64 rental units. Next slide, please. So these, I'm just going to go over a few projects that have been completed since the last update. First, the Richmond Development at Gooseberry Place. This was the last phase of the Richmond build-out. Oh, and I should say, so for all of these projects, tenants have, have started moving and/or have finished moving into all of the units, and they have now completed. So for Gooseberry Place, it was the last phase of the Richmond build-out, and it is 55 rental units. The Richmond Development at Sandpiper Place 2 is six homeownership units. We're really excited about this project because the trust provided short-term, the Affordable Housing Trust provided short-term loans to expedite the development process, and the principal and interest have already been paid back in full, which will be used for future housing projects. And 31 Fairgrounds, also known as Wiggle's Way, was completed with Housing Nantucket, and Housing Nantucket also completed- And Housing Nantucket also completed one rental unit at Pochek Ave, which was an example of housing preservation through house recycling and relocation. Next slide, please. So just some pictures of our recent successes. On the left, there is Wiggle's Way, 31 Fairgrounds. In the middle, the Habitat for Community Development at Wait Drive. And on the right is an image of the construction at the Richmond Development.
I like having someone to tag team, Ms. Smith. So next, we're going to talk about the status of vacant land developments. So part of the initial kickoff in 2019 of funding was to acquire vacant land for scattered site developments that would count on our subsidized housing inventory list. So the way this process works is the trust acquires land, we work on development of our request for proposals, and then we launch the request for proposals and review bids. So starting on the left, anything that's been newly acquired since the last quarterly update, we acquired 10 Parker Lane and 55 Fairgrounds Road, which is a two-acre lot just up the street off Fairgrounds Road. And this was a really unique situation in which the previous owner was doing their estate planning and wanted to make sure that the future parcels remained year-round and could provide a homeownership opportunity. So the trust worked with the homeowner to work on a sale that provided a life right to the owner, so we'll be able to gradually develop the site over time and create homeownership opportunities of seven different lots and staying within local zoning. The second parcel is 8 White Street, and we are currently in the process of putting together a request for proposals for this lot. This is part of the bargain sale that the trust purchased. This happened a few years ago when the sellers decided, again, they wanted this to be part of the year-round community, and they sold it below the appraised value for a tax benefit and to ensure that this remains in the year-round community. So the idea behind this is that it would be homeownership for the missing middle, or anything that we say, attainable housing, to 240% of area median income. And when we talk about 240%, I just wanted to be clear that that's for a family of four earning up to $350,000 a year. And then lastly, the big hurdle is the request for proposals under review when they are bidded out. We currently bundled the lots at Orange Street, Vesper Lane, and Bartlett Road and released that to provide up to 61 units of rentals, and then 7 Amelia Drive for an additional three. And those were released this past fall, and each received two bids that are currently under review. The way, the reason that it was bundled was the idea that it would attract the opportunity to use low-income housing tax credit dollars, and so we're thrilled that we were able to receive two bids for that project. Next. So next, we're going to walk through housing programs and initiatives. And what everybody is very excited to talk about is the Year-Round Deed Restriction Pilot Program. You can go to the next slide. This has been a work in progress and a labor of love over the last couple of years. So back in 2023, the Affordable Housing Trust started community engagement to determine how a year-round deed restriction program could work. We had members from Vail, Colorado come out and speak to us about their program that they use. We hired Barrett Planning to look at the feasibility of having a program like this, and we did community engagement to determine what the community would want. And to explain how this program would work is right, previously in 2023, the only way to have a year-round restriction in perpetu, I'm sorry, have a restriction in perpetuity was to have either an affordability restriction or a conservation restriction. And what the trust was really hoping to do was something around year-round. So the way that we were developing it was it would have both a year-round restriction and an affordability restriction under the pilot program. While doing all of this work, we were also advocating this at the state level to allow us to utilize year-round deed restrictions, notating how important it was to keep our year-round stock year-round. So in 2024, the trust worked on developing the guidelines. We got approval from Select Board in August of last year, if you remember, for $2 million towards this initial pilot program. And while all of this was happening, the Affordable Homes Act was enacted at the state, which allowed for year-round housing occupancy restrictions without income restrictions. So the trust paused for a second and wanted to see how that played out before releasing the pilot program. We opted into the seasonal communities designation, as Dylan mentioned earlier, at town meeting, and we're still waiting for information to come out from the state on how to implement year-round occupancy restrictions without the affordability restriction. And so while we're waiting for that, we really wanted to kick off the pilot program. And we've had a lot of interest from the community reaching out, as people are either gearing up to sell their homes or want to be able to stay in their homes. And the idea behind this is homeowners would, in exchange for cash incentive, put a year-round occupancy and affordability restriction in perpetuity on their property. And this means that people could either stay in their existing home and upon resale, would then retain year-round housing and affordability, or it could be used as down payment assistance for any new buyer. So we're really excited. Earlier tonight, you approved the Monitoring Agency of Housing Nantucket in your contracts, and so that will allow us to move forward with accepting applications, making sure that we have a program in place for monitoring and compliance. So stay tuned, because that will be released shortly, and I'm going to hand it back to Dylan.
So I just wanted to talk briefly about the Lease to Locals program. So it's in partnership with Placemate, and it was launched two years ago. The program incentivizes homeowners to convert underutilized housing into affordable year-round rentals by providing subsidies based on qualified tenants. Last year, it was relaunched under Housing Nantucket with a $450,000 grant from the Affordable Housing Trust. And so these numbers on the slide represent the outcome from that. So 34 properties were converted, leading to 81 total people housed, of which 68 were qualified tenants. The rentals converted through Lease to Locals had an average monthly rent of just under $3,100, with an average monthly rent per bedroom under $1,500. And looking at Lease to Locals as being relaunched for a third year, but this time under the Affordable Housing Trust. So I'm just going to talk briefly about some of our upcoming initiatives and strategic development, as Kristi's already talked about, where our goal is to add 91 units to the subsidized housing inventory or shy list by the end of the year, which would bring us up to 8% and even closer to the state safe harbor mandate of 10%. We are beginning to explore the Rooted Renters Program, which Placemate has had success implementing in other seasonal communities. We view rooted renters as a potential supplement to lease to locals, and whereas lease to locals incentivizes homeowners to convert underutilized space into year-round affordable rentals, rooted renters assist homeowners who are already renting at affordable rates in order to incentivize them to continue to do so. Next, we are reviewing the good landlord tax exemption to further incentivize affordable year-round rentals. As I've already talked about, Kristi, the Affordable Housing Trust Chair, Brian Sullivan, and Tucker Holland will be testifying on Tuesday at the State House in support of the real estate transfer fee. Brian previously testified in front of the Joint Committee on Housing, so this testimony will be a continuation of that ongoing advocacy work. We are officially kicking off the Housing Production Plan update in August. Our last Housing Production Plan was released in 2021, so we will be in work on the 2026 version, and it's something that's conducted through community and stakeholder engagement, and it's a data-driven analysis for, to guide future development, housing development strategy goals. And lastly, we are submitting a proposal with Remain to partner with students at Worcester Polytechnic Institute, WPI, to work with them on a study regarding underutilized spaces downtown for innovative housing strategies. So hopefully, we'll be working with them in the fall semester to see how their research can benefit Nantucket. And I think we're ready for questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Any comments?
I will happily make a comment. I joined the Affordable Housing Trust about 10 years ago, maybe, and this is amazing. And it's not only what has been accomplished, but there are so many new ideas, so many new programs, tools in the toolbox. And I, every time we talk about housing, I say the same thing. It's just amazing to me how much progress we've made, and I'm really proud of us as a community for focusing on making sure that our year-round residents have safe, stable, and attainable housing. And my goal is to continue to do that, improve the quality of life for folks who've really, really having a hard time. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, just briefly, I of course echo all Brooks' comments. I think the Housing Office has done absolutely terrific work, and expanding the staff has really helped with, in addition to Dylan and Rachel, Tracy. It's, it's been terrific. And I think the year-round deed restriction program is really exciting, and I know it's, I think you've been working on it for over three years now, and I think that the community is really going to embrace that when it, when it's fully formed and comes out. And I encourage everyone to take a look at that, because there are several different scenarios. As you briefed us this morning, sort of works for both sides of the equation, so really good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Onto your next item, number four.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the Local Action Unit application for 18 through 26 Sparks Ave. Ac Mid Island LLC is proposing to restrict eight of their 32 units in their mixed-use major commercial development. As part of their planning board decision, they are submitting a Local Action Unit to request that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities approve their project for inclusion on our subsidized housing inventory list. The LAU application must be executed by the town for submission and the Affordable Housing Trust. The developers have hired local Nantucket resident Kelly Weigald as their project site manager and Lynn Sweet as their consultant for the Local Action Unit application. As I mentioned, they're restricting eight units, and in doing that, restricting up to 80% of area median income, all 32 units would count on our subsidized housing inventory list. The Local Action Unit program is the method by which the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities recognize these units as shy-eligible and adds them towards our 10% count. This is in further development of the affordable and attainable year-round housing, and the Affordable Housing Trust as a co-signer voted to execute the LAU at their July 15th date. Town Council has reviewed the LAU application on behalf of the town and the trust, and we're requesting that the Select Board approve us to proceed with the LAU submission and requesting that the Chair or Vice Chair sign on behalf of the board and any other documents needed by EULC that are related to the project.
Any questions?
Just so you know, this is 4B, if it's the LAU. So you're voting on 4B.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously.
Back to 4A, sorry, to the amount of order.
It's okay.
So to accompany the Local Action Unit application, we're requesting a letter of support on behalf of the town to send to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities regarding Ac Mid Island's proposed development and requesting local preference. As I just mentioned, there's a, it's a 32-unit mixed-use major commercial development in which eight units would be restricted. They're seeking a local preference for 70% of the shy-restricted units be designated to local preference. This would allow applicants who meet one of the following criteria to be part of, what I'd say is a special local preference lottery, so the names would be, the lottery chips would be picked first out of a local preference before it's opened up to all applicants. And people, applicants who qualify would either be a current resident of Nantucket, an employee of the town of Nantucket, an employee of a local business located in Nantucket, or households with children attending a Nantucket public school. So the, the request is for the Select Board to endorse a letter requesting this local preference. The Affordable Housing Trust endorsed the letter, although they're not a signer of it, at the July 15th meeting. Town Council has reviewed the letter on behalf of the town and the trust, and I would be requesting the execution by the Chair or Vice Chair of this letter to send alongside the LAU application.
Questions? Motion?
I would move approval, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and that adds towards our 10% goal. So I appreciate the developers and everybody working together.
We'll move back to number one under this section, the committee appointments.
So I forgot to email the applicants to tell them to come to the meeting and speak on behalf of their applications. The good news is there's no contested seats, so if the board so chooses, they can make appointments by acclamation. But I'll just review them real quick. Cannabis Advisory Committee, there's one seat available, and there's still zero applicants, so we will keep that as an open seat that people can apply for. The Contract Review Committee, there's one seat available and one applicant, Lee Tesser. Cultural Council, one seat available and one applicant, Bianca Brown. What? Oh. Roads and Right of Way Committee, one seat available and one applicant, Gordon Octorlon. Scholarship Committee, huh? Did I, did I, I really messed that one up, sorry. Scholarship Committee, there's two seats available and one applicant, Rebecca Woodley Oliver. Tree Advisory Committee, there's one seat available and zero applicants, so we will keep that one as an open committee that people can apply to as well. And then the Zoning Board of Appeals Alternate, one seat available and one applicant, Jim So no paper ballots.
I'll make a move that we appoint all by acclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Any opposed?
Aye.
4 to 1. Next up, we have Natural Resources Department, review of proposed amendments to Town of Nantucket Regulations, Chapter 260, fishing and shell fishing. This is a request to schedule a public hearing for this purpose. Any questions, comments, a motion to schedule a public hearing to discuss it?
Some move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously.
Madam Chair, if the board has any questions about the regulations, we do have staff available to review them.
Any questions for tonight? Okay. Real estate items, request for approval and execution of a sent for land court petition complaint for approval of plan case number 22 SBQ 1774509. I'm just going to turn this over to Tracy.
I'm going to abbreviate that. Tracy McDonald, real estate manager. I'm requesting an assent for a private legal counsel, Arthur Reed, to file a land court ask petition for issuance of certificate of title in the name of the town for the former, the former Paper Street, known as Harriet Street. The parcels were taken by eminent domain in 2014. In 2022, Attorney Reed filed a petition for approval of land court plan for the parcels shown as Parcells D and G on the 17745O plan, and Parcel H on the 17745P plan, which was included in your packet and are shown on the same plan sheet. In order for the town to convey the parcels, in conjunction with the yard sale program, the next step is the petition to obtain the certificates of title. Sorry. Attorney Reed is offering to simplify this process on behalf of the town and for the benefit of his clients and minimize staff and town council time and costs. Conveyance for the Harriet Street parcels was approved by Article 77 at the 2010 town meeting. It's proposed that Parcel H, which is a 6,000-square-foot parcel, would be conveyed to the abutter at 7 Clifford Street, and Parcells D and G, Parcel D is 2,000 square feet and G is 1,000, about 1,000 square feet, would be conveyed to the abutter at 9 Clifford Street. The ascent has been reviewed and approved by town council, and staff is recommending the approval and execution of this document. In an effort to move forward the yard sale program, along with the willingness of Attorney Reed to handle this matter is very helpful. He is in attendance tonight, should you have any specific questions. And Vicki Marsh is also available for questions.
Any questions? Any motions?
I'll move approval.
You have a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Signed it like 15 years ago, some of it.
Okay, next up, we're, we're moving to the town mayor. Okay, next up, we're moving to the Town Manager's report, but I just, I just had a thought for Select Board reports and comments. Could we take 2 and 3 prior to 1? Because I think that that may help inform the discussion of number 1. Okay. So, we'll be making that change. And I will hand it over to Libby for traffic safety.
So, the Gold Star item, DPW Director is online to give a brief update of this. I don't think we're quite done with this yet, but he has a brief update for you.
Thanks, Libby. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Drew.
And Erica, feel free to share the map on the screen for anybody that needs it. So, this is a bit of a long and convoluted history, so to make sure I got all the facts right, I wrote something I'd like to read to the Board. So, in 2014, a request was made to the Traffic Safety Work Group to install traffic calming elements on Gold Star Drive. That request was denied. In 2023, a new request was made to Traffic Safety Work Group for the installation of a speed hump on Gold Star Drive. Mike Burns collected data at two locations near Number 5 Gold Star and Number 13 for five days and seven days in August 2023, respectively. The speed data was analyzed and discussed at the September 21st, 2023 Traffic Safety Work Group meeting. I'll now share the meeting minutes from that discussion about this request. Mr. Burns reviewed the traffic data in the work group's packet from two locations along Gold Star Drive, noting the data shows that the roadway doesn't warrant speed humps per the town's traffic calming policy, condition number six, which evaluates the 85th percentile speed from collected data versus the posted speed limit. Jane Valero noted that the roadway is dangerous and becomes more of a concern every year as Gold Star has become more of a cut-through. She said she feels 25 miles per hour is too fast for the road. Chair Gesbaro said Gold Star Drive is unique, like Newtown Road, as it provides a cut-through and speed data is only one criteria. He asked if speed humps should be considered as a deterrent to the use of the road. Mr. Burns states that that was the rationale behind the speed humps on Newtown Road. Mr. Burns moved to recommend a speed hump between 3 and 5 Gold Star Drive. Chief Pittman voiced concern that the Valeros seem to be the only ones making the request. He asked if anyone else is asking for speed humps. Ms. Valero answered affirmatively, noting another request was made years ago and had a butter support. Ms. Mooney noted the process for traffic calming devices, noting, once traffic safety makes its recommendation, the proponent must demonstrate neighborhood support by submitting a petition signed by at least 2/3 of abutting property owners who support the application and are willing to accept 100% of the cost of installing speed humps. Mr. Barnes said the residents who park along Gold Star Drive are already providing traffic calming with their parked vehicles. Chair Gesbaro seconded the motion by roll call vote. Mr. Burns, yes. Mr. Sylvia, yes. Chief Cranston, yes. Chief Pittman, no. Chair Gesbaro, yes. So voted. Subsequently, a petition followed that was signed by residents at 1, 2, 3, 5, 7, 8, and 13 Gold Star, 6 Sparks Ave, 11 Old South Road, and 13 Old South Road, representing 10 properties and thus support by more than 2/3 of the butters. Additionally, it was at this time that a request was also made to install three speed humps along Gold Star Drive, one between Old South Road and the corner, and two between the corner and Sparks Ave. That request was not recommended by the Traffic Safety Work Group. The Traffic Safety Work Group recommendation for the installation of one speed hump was presented to the Select Board in December 2024 and approved by this Board. After that, the DPW was tasked with coordinating and scheduling the installation by Victor Brandon, which took some time in the spring of 2025 with all the roadwork going on for various capital projects. In the meantime, I set up a meeting with the streets organizer to appropriately cite the speed hump while waiting for an opportunity in Victor Brandon's schedule. I mentioned in an email at the time, and I quote, "It would also probably be a good idea for you and me to meet out there and determine the best location. I wouldn't want to impound stormwater or impact the driveways in the area, and just want to make sure what we installed doesn't solve one problem and cause another." Unfortunately, we failed at that, in part because the residents at 5 Gold Star park on their lawn on the west side of the house. So, citing the speed hump between 3 and 5 as approved by the Select Board would cause issues for those residents each and every time they pull in and out of their driveway. So, we, that day, we talked to the neighbors in the area and decided it would be best to locate the speed hump approximately 30 feet to the east so as not to interfere with the driveways. I had the opportunity to speak with the Ross family who lives at 5 Gold Star and whom the speed hump would be directly located in front of. They were overwhelmingly in support of the speed hump and proposed location. I unfortunately did not have the opportunity to speak with the residents at 6 Gold Star, whose driveway is off Milestone Lane, but whose property also directly abuts the new speed hump location. As is usually the case with Victor Brandon, no schedule was provided for the installation. And eventually, on a slow day after finishing up a smaller paving job elsewhere on Island, Victor called me and said he could install the traffic calming device. At this point, I told him over the phone that the speed bump was marked out on the road and ready for his crew. This proved costly, as a speed bump and a speed hump are two very different things. Bumps are more acute and abrupt and can cause more noise when driven over. So, unfortunately, a speed bump was installed and in a location that was not technically approved by the Select Board, both of which were my mistake while trying to do what I thought was best, and I 100% on that. Shortly thereafter, I, my Deputy Director, Richard Moore, and Town Administration were contacted by the residents at 6 Gold Star and later their attorney, who noted that the speed bump was affecting the quiet enjoyment of this property and the quality of life of her client and family. The letter also claimed that my review of this matter reveals that proper procedures, many of which were established by the Select Board, were not followed. I do, I do just want to be clear that I firmly disagree with that claim. The Town Manager was also contacted and directed the DPW to remove the speed bump, which Victor Brandon was instructed to do. Upon arrival, according to the foreman, about a dozen people approached the crew and refused to allow removal of the speed bump. Based on the atmosphere that I could sense over the phone from Maticket, I instructed them to leave the speed bump as is for now. The Town Manager emailed the concerned residents at 6 Gold Star and the streets organizer to inform them that I would be setting up in a butters meeting to allow residents to express their perspectives and work collaboratively towards a consensus on both the appropriate design and location of traffic calming measures. At the request of the lawyer for residents of 6 Gold Star and at the direction of the Town Manager, I scheduled a meeting on Monday, July 14th at 5:00 PM with the butters to review how the traffic calming application and review process started, proceeded, and how we got to where we are, as well as discuss the existing style, which is a bump versus a hump, the location as approved versus as installed, and review possible corrective measures. At that time, the only thing I was authorized to do was relocate the speed bump, this time, of course, as a speed hump, back to between 3 and 5 Gold Star. At the butters meeting, we discussed the speed data, but also the volume of traffic that Gold Star Drive experiences. The data collected in August 2023 yielded an average daily traffic count of more than 1,600 vehicles, which is excessive for a narrow residential street with a 90-degree curve. Both at the meeting and after, Town Administration and I got two requests from the butters at 3 and 8 Gold Star, asking the work group to reconsider the request for three speed humps, as they felt that one speed hump was inadequate based on the conditions of the road, specifically the location of the single speed hump as approved, the geometry of the roadway, and the average daily traffic volumes. On Thursday, July 17th, the Traffic Safety Work Group held our regularly scheduled meeting to review other unrelated requests, as well as the requests to reconsider three speed humps. This time, we reviewed the speed data, but also the traffic volumes. And perhaps most importantly, I shared my observations from the July 14th butters meeting and my experiences while on Gold Star Drive with my foreman and town arborist on Wednesday, July 15th. I shared that on many occasions, in just the short time I was physically present on Gold Star Drive, I witnessed reckless operation and maneuvers of motor vehicles in both directions, even when the area was a DPW work zone and while holding in a butters meeting of about 20 people on the road shoulder. At last week's meeting, Traffic Safety Work Group unanimously approved recommending three speed humps along Gold Star Drive as indicated on the figure shown. It should be noted that the description for the middle speed hump should read between 7 and 8, not between 5 and 7. I emailed all the butters on Sunday, July 20th, updating them on the Traffic Safety Work Group review and recommendation of three speed humps, and asked that they respond individually to notify me and Erica Mooney whether they support or oppose the installation of three speed humps. Of the 14 properties that abut Gold Star Drive, as of this meeting, I have heard back from owners of nine properties, seven of which are in favor, one is strongly opposed, and one stated they would support two speed humps, but not three, which I count as a no. The threshold for 2/3 majority is 9.3 out of 14 properties. So, to move forward with seeking approval by Select Board, owners of three more parcels will need to notify us that they are in favor of this plan as proposed. I'd also like to note that of the four property owners that we have not yet, or that have not yet responded, three signed the original petition for a single speed hump. We are working on getting in touch with these residents and plan to bring this back to Select Board in August if enough neighborhood support has been demonstrated. I know this has been a bit long-winded, and that's my specialty, but I think it highlights the inherent challenges of traffic calming elements. It's not easy by any means to locate them effectively while also keeping everybody happy. Oftentimes, residents are in support, but not in front of their house. And as evidenced by opposition, support for one, support for two, support for three, you know, everyone's opinion of what is appropriate and will be effective differs. I, I once felt strongly that if the speed data doesn't warrant traffic calming, that we should never consider it. However, speed is only one factor evaluated by the Traffic Safety Work Group, in line with the Select Board's traffic calming request and review process, and I think rightfully so, as my onsite observations made me feel very differently towards traffic calming on this street. Because 2/3 of butters' support has not yet been documented, we are not seeking Select Board approval at this time. However, we wanted to give the Board an update on where things stand, highlight the amount of time and effort we've put into evaluating the appropriate path forward for this street, and I welcome feedback from the Board on, you know, how you, how you'd like to see us proceed and any other thoughts you may have. Thank you.
Matt?
You know, I appreciate all the work that Drew has done on this. It's, this, you know, meeting with the employee, with the employees, with the, with all the neighbors and, and getting all the input, this is the right way to do it. It's a lot longer, but I'm glad that he is doing that. I do remember when we, where speed humps were proposed for Newtown Road and, you know, oh, we can't do that, and then, you know, that's not fast enough. And they did the data, and some of the cars going down there were 50 miles an hour. You know, there was some outliers that were flying down the road. So, we ended up putting them there, and I think it's helped. I, I think it's, some of this, I believe, is a Band-Aid on a bigger issue that we need to get a handle on. I think that we, from North Liberty Street to the airport, we are in an urban environment, and we should be building as an urban environment. These are suburban streets that have, that are, you know, that are throughways unless there's cars parked on them, and then we don't want the cars parked because there's, you know, we haven't set up for that. So, I think that we should be, you know, over time, we should be redesigning streets from North Liberty to the airport with no cul-de-sacs, with sidewalks, with on-street parking that slows cars down, and there should be connections so it doesn't take an hour and a half to go down Old South Road. There should be five or six or 10 other ways to get through that area. And I know that that, you know, that will be very difficult over time, expensive and difficult, and people will oppose it if it's their road. But I think, you know, we, we can't keep adding the volume of houses and traffic and people that we're adding and think that we can continue to have suburb, you know, small little side, suburban side streets, because as we see, they've turned into sort of throughways. So, yeah, I think it's a bigger issue. I think we've got to deal with this, but hopefully, we will start to think about it a little bit differently. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Alja, I represent the DeLucas at 6 Gold Star, and I first want to say that I really appreciate all the time that Drew has taken with this. It's not easy. It's a, it's a complicated issue. The one question that I have is the, the hump that was installed instead of the bump in the wrong location is still there, and it's really, really a problem for my clients. I don't think my client, one of my clients has slept in the last month and a half. She's a wreck over this. And we thought it could stay when we thought that the three solution was going to pass and they'd be implementing that so that he, so that he wouldn't have to do it repeatedly. But since this is now being delayed, can that hump, no bump, can the bump be removed from its wrong location and wrong application until this gets sorted out or put in the location where it was approved by this Board something so that we're not continually subjected to it? I mean, we're completely willing to help work on a solution that works for everyone, particularly the bumps, humps instead of bumps, but that, that's the request.
I'm gonna go to Drew.
We can certainly go to Drew. That is exactly what we attempted to do a few weeks ago, and that is where the very highly negative reaction came from, the neighborhood. So, we're trying to redo this in one go, I think. But Drew, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, thanks, Libby. No, you're absolutely right. I mean, we, we certainly understand and appreciate, you know, the headache that this has caused for, you know, one of the residents. We are kind of getting pulled in both directions, and I want, I didn't want to rush this process, but we wanted to try to find a resolution that works for everybody kind of expeditiously so that, what I want to avoid is removing the speed bump and then installing the speed hump as previously approved and then removing that and installing three, you know, in other locations and constantly going back and forth, which I think would, would be really disruptive to all those that use the street, whether they live there or not. So, I guess I would maybe make a suggestion, if it's possible, to, you know, if the, if the Board is so inclined to make a conditional motion to approve the three speed humps pending demonstration of 2/3 butters' support, we're happy to, you know, do whatever it takes to, you know, get in touch with the residents that have yet to respond, and we can certainly keep everyone in the loop as far as that progress.
My only request is, if you do that, please correct the plan and the written documentation so that it correctly says between 7 and 8 as opposed to between 5 and 7. I know Drew did a revised plan earlier today that, that corrected that. It probably didn't make it to you, Erica, to get onto the screen. But if that plan, if the documentation could be correct, the plan and the written part, so that we don't have the same confusion and the thing put in the wrong location, that would be really important.
Matt?
I have a question. Would there be opposition from the, all the various neighbors, I know it's not all here, to just taking the one that's there and moving it between 7 and 8? Like, do we think, you know, and then leaving the other two? I mean, I just, because I understand not wanting to move it to one place and then move it to another place, but, you know, anyway.
May I? Drew, I realize Traffic Safety recommended three. It's a little bit of a dog chasing its tail here in terms of process. So, is the traffic safety recommendation required, or can we supersede that? So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest this, that, that we make a conditional motion to approve the three speed humps, two or three speed humps in any of these three locations, pending approval of one or the other by 2/3 of the butters. And, and so that it can move forward if they get there. So, I guess I'm saying if like three's too many for some people, maybe everybody who voted for three would be happy with two. They were happy with one, and we could get this done at two and move it along.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Turning it into a hump instead of a bump.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, I'm not addressing removing of the bump right now. I'm addressing moving forward to the final outcome. I think we should. I think we should talk about whether to remove the bump now pending this, but I think if we make a conditional approval of two or three, we're more likely to get to a conclusion that can move this forward, and then I would...
Can we even say one, two, or three, that we're okay, as long as they're humps?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Up to three, yeah. One, two, or three. Yeah, that's a great idea. Okay.
Is that...
Your mic's not on.
I think we need a clear statement that the present one is removed.
Okay.
Do we want to just add that to the motion rather than it being separate?
Is its removal happening whether or not this happens, or contingent upon this happening is the question I would have for my fellow board members?
Well, to me, if I may speak, it's in the wrong place. It's not what we approved, therefore, and it's an inconvenience to a resident, so it's an illegal bump.
Okay.
And we should enforce our rules, and the rules that shouldn't be there, so we should take it out.
So I would amend my motion to say that it would be a conditional approval of up to three humps in the locations identified in this plan and the removal of the bump.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Everything clear? Malcolm.
And I'll say, yeah, I'll just say I'll encourage the folks in the neighborhood to work together to get to two-thirds and get this done.
Thank you. Town managers' report?
I unfortunately was not able to complete that tonight, so I'll have that for you at a future date.
Okay. All right, now we have the fun setting some dates for a special town meeting and an annual town meeting. Which one would you like to start with?
Annual.
Yeah, annual.
My preference for the annual, and the moderator's here so she can weigh in, is May 4th, but I'd love it if we could start it a little bit earlier, like 4:30. Anybody else?
I concur.
That was my thought as well.
Any other comments? I am not seeing hands up, so someone has to alert me.
Oh, there's nothing.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved?
Okay, so I'm going to, at 4:30?
4:30, yep.
As long as the school will allow it.
Yep, as long as we can.
And would the motion include holding the election on the 19th?
Correct.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously, so get ready. Annual town meeting will be May 4th. If you want me to continue, I personally think we're going to need to schedule a fall town meeting or one's going to be forced on us, and the date that we would prefer is November 4th, which is Tuesday Election Day, and the school is closed. And I would also suggest maybe starting at 4:30.
May I ask a process question? I would like to signal to the community that we are willing to do this, but I also want to hear whether it's necessary for us to do it, because I'm hearing various rumors that there's groups that want to call a special town meeting on their own, which, just by the way, is a really, really bad idea, because we're forced to do it in 45 days, and it's a huge burden on town administration. So I appreciate the fact that those parties who have indicated that they have the signatures have waited until this, the chair adjourned this tonight. So I don't know the intersection of the two things, but maybe we do it tentatively pending...
Let's talk about when the warrant would be opened.
I haven't even begun to develop a timeline for November 4th, say, special town meeting, but it would have to be done, I'll have to get that going quite quickly, and I would think that the warrant would be opened and closed quickly, like within a day or two, so that we can get everything, all of the hearings and the meetings and the publications and the notice requirements and the printing, done in a timely manner.
So I would suggest that we tentatively set the date and that we develop a timeline, and then if these articles come forward, we will know if we need to have it. Does that seem reasonable? Any comments?
I just, I can't, if different articles come forward for short-term rentals and we end up with two or three or four, we're going to have the same thing happen all over again. If the group, if the different groups aren't willing and able to work with each other and bring something together that we as a community can be unified over, then we are not, it's going to be the same thing. There's strong voting blocks, you know, on all different sides of this, and we need to get to two-thirds. And so I get very worried. I just, I think it would be a waste of time to bring two or three or four different articles. You know, we need to find a way for the groups that feel strongly to work with each other to solve this. And I think expecting the Select Board or the Planning Board or, you know, the zoning board or the lawyers to solve it, I don't see how that's going to work. We fried it a couple of different times. The groups that feel strongly have to do it somehow. Anyway, I'm making, we should, we'll be talking about that in a minute, I think, but I worry about having a town meeting with two or three articles.
Agreed.
I completely agree with you, Matt, but I'd rather have it on our own timeline than one imposed upon us, and that's why, that's why I feel like it's really important that we do this.
I agree.
We have been to this rodeo before. We've had this, we had the same conversation. I can't even remember which of the special town meetings got forced on us because somebody was going to call one. It was the one right after the annual when the first round failed, right? So we keep going at this the same way over and over again, and I agree with you, but I would make a motion that we tentatively schedule a special town meeting for November 5th and request the town administration, give us a timeline to approve as soon as possible.
At our August 6th meeting?
Just one question?
Yes.
But there's nothing happening, Election Day, is it?
It's the schools closed, so it's much more convenient for setup.
But there's no state elections, there's no national elections. All right.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries unanimously. Now I'm going to recuse myself and see if I can fix my computer.
You're very lucky. Okay, so we have a discussion regarding the potential for short-term rental bylaw mediation. I've been sort of racking my brain all day on how we, you know, how we handle this. What we talked about when we continued this was the people that felt, because one of the issues we have to do if we do mediation is who would be involved, and it should be, I think we were told by town council, five people, give or take, is a good number to get something done, but I'm not sure how we would pick five people. Who picks them and how do we do that? That was really not sure when we talked about it last time, so, you know, I think Mr. Pucci is on. You know, I'm not sure how the board would like to, you know, sort of progress on this. Malcolm?
I tend to agree with you. We've done this before. The question is, I think picking five people would be controversial. I would like to see the people that are talking individually continue that a little bit. I think it would be better if they just went off by themselves and found a solution, if that's possible, if that's possible. But I'm open for discussion, and like everything, I like to hear everybody speak and then I'll make a judgment.
I think from some of the emails we received and some of the things we've seen, I'm not sure that that is possible. I would hope that would happen too, or mediation would bring that result, to bring, you know, disparate groups together. You know, that would be my hope. You know, there are, we did receive, you know, one article that Mr. Reed had sent, you know, a draft of an article that has had some of the groups together. I'm not sure if it's all of them yet, and I'm hearing that there's another, a couple other groups that have got gathering signatures and have potential articles. I haven't seen those, and I tried to talk to everybody, but I haven't seen those articles. So I'm not sure that we're there yet, you know, so. Any thoughts?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would, I tend to agree with yourself and Malcolm. I think we're kind of in this strange space because I'm worried about, like, the point of mediation is to get everyone in a room, right, where they can speak frankly and then come out with some agreement with a professional zoning mediator, right? But going through the process on Short-Term Rental Work Group and then Short-Term Rental Subcommittee that I chaired, I mean, that was all done in public, and we were accused of doing things behind the scenes, so I'm a little concerned about whoever those five people are or whatever, basically the process being attacked, and then everybody gets to hang their whatever grievance on that. But also, to your point, if it's three or four articles, we could be right back in the same spot if somebody's going to support. Now, maybe things have changed a little bit around the court case and the appeal and people's livelihoods, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, this is a very extensive issue, laundry list of things that this affects. So I'm a bit out of a loss as well to what the right move here is, and I think that anything that we and/or the Planning Board, because this is a zoning article after all, so, you know, we have to obviously work with them too, so. Exactly what the right process, I don't know, I'd love to hear, I don't know if you're taking comment tonight, or we'll schedule this for another time, but I'd love to hear what people have to say and how close, because I'm hearing there's at least four articles being written, so. And based on the calls that I got today of everyone concerned that we were opening and closing the warrant tonight, which was not on the agenda, we wouldn't even, couldn't even do that if we wanted, it just seems like there's a lot of stuff out there that's swirling, anyway.
Here's a thought. How many people that are here believe they're a stakeholder and would want to be involved in a mediation? So we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people that are here, seven that feel like they would be, want to be involved.
Eight, make it eight.
Eight, make it eight. So we've got eight that are here. Is there anyone that didn't put their hands up? And there's another one. So we've got nine. Is there anyone that didn't put their hands up because they don't feel like we should be doing mediation? I kind of guessed that on a couple. So we've got two or three that feel...
If you're going to talk, you have to go to the mic.
You got to, yes, it was coming to the mic. Yeah, I'm just trying to get a feeling, I kind of, I think I know where people are, but I'm trying to get a feeling for that.
Peter Schaefer, I mean, if we're going to have mediation, I'd like to be on the committee, but I don't believe we should have mediation. We did it already. The Short-Term Rental Working Group had a person that we paid money for who came in and sat with us for all those meetings and was supposed to come up with a common ground, and we did, except for one person. And that one person represented a group that is now saying they're ready to negotiate, but when we were trying to negotiate with them, we said, well, what can we do? They said, unless you come our way, there's no way. So unless they've changed their point of view, and I'm talking about Act Now, there's no reason to have a mediation, because we're just going to be hitting our, you know, knocking our head against the wall because it feels good.
Of all the people that raised their hands, is there anyone that they would be comfortable delegating to a mediation? Do they, we asked how many people are interested, but how many groups does that represent? So if two people raise their hand, they're sitting next to each other, would they trust the person next to them to represent them in the mediation? Like, because we could get the number down that way if...
Thank you, Matthew Peel. So I just want to clarify something real quick. If I could, I don't know if Giorgio or Mr. Pucci could speak on this, but my understanding of mediation is this is going to happen behind closed doors, and then when they come out of mediation, whoever is in that mediation can't oppose this article, can't talk about this article, and can't talk about what happened in mediation. Is this correct?
I think you're partially correct, but Mr. Pucci?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Acting Chair and members of the board. This is George Pucci from KP Law. John Giorgio is here tonight too. Yes, so there would be a mediation agreement that would be signed at the beginning that parties agree to keep confidential the substance of the communications and the negotiations in the mediation. However, that would not, remember, mediation is voluntary. So if a participant in the mediation decides at the end that they are not happy with the final result, they're free to say that in public and not sign off on it. So as the result of the mediation, though, those who do agree to something that was negotiated, and again, you know, through a give and take, that would occur behind closed doors so that people can speak freely, there would be a document that's prepared from that that would be worked on very carefully in the mediation, working off of things that were submitted in advance of the mediation, and then it would be very clear what party would support that document coming out of it. You know, hopefully the mediation, and I'm not advocating this, it was just a suggestion to try to be proactive in dealing with something when you have the uncertainty of pending litigation. So, you know, hopefully the mediation would be successful, and you end up with all the participants in that supporting the document that comes out of it. That would then be a proposed warrant article. And remember, it's no disrespect to either the board, you know, having the jurisdiction to present the article or to voters at town meeting, it's just to try to work a consensus to come up with a document that can be supported at town meeting as opposed to being debated, you know, for and against by various advocates. I mean, I would mention one, and so there's a combination of it definitely being behind closed doors, there's no question about it. The mediation itself is confidential, will be behind closed doors. The participants to the mediation, however, would be identified very clearly, and the end result of the mediation, if it's unsuccessful totally, that nobody agrees to a document, that would be the result. It was unsuccessful. If there was a document agreed to, that document would be made public, and it would also be made subject to everyone knowing who supports that document that came out of the mediation. So it's a sort of a combination between a confidential conversation with known participants that then leads to something public, that then the public would have the right to accept or reject. So that would be basically how that process would work. One thing I did want to note, so I don't talk too much tonight because I'm talking right now, is when you talked about five members, there is no set number about who you would have participate. I would note that today, just looking at my email, I was copied on emails from three distinct people, representatives of a group or individuals, and they were having this debate on email, not involving public officials, no quorum issues or anything like that. They were private individuals, and it, you know, I hope Attorney Reed doesn't mind me mentioning his name, he was involved in that dialogue, and it was a civil back-and-forth dialogue for and against what the proposals were that they were talking about. So if you've got four article proponents, it's not rocket science to say that, gee, there could be four participants in this mediation along with a representative of the Select Board and a representative of the Planning Board, representative of whoever else you want to have there. So you can kind of think hypothetically how the process could work, but, you know, I just want to be clear, this is not something that we're advocating, it's just an idea that I came up with to, you know, try to deal with the uncertainty and to try to head off, you know, the type of debate that can happen at town meeting, which is totally in good faith, but often it can lead to things being defeated that you might not want to have defeated. It also gives you the chance to make sure that that final warrant article that gets presented is in coordination with your general bylaw and things work. In other words, it's not a crazy quilt that a proponent suggests, and depending on who shows up at town meeting and how the debate goes, you end up with something that's an unintended consequence that may have other inconsistencies or legal problems or that type of thing. that may have other inconsistencies or legal problems or that type of thing. It's just a way of trying to maybe reach a resolution on this with an article that, you know, we would, we would examine and we would give you an opinion that it meets all the legalities that's consistent with the general bylaw and that type of thing. And the other thing that, of course, can occur as a result of that is it could potentially moot the litigation, that then you don't have to worry about how the appeals court will ultimately come down on the appeal of the land court's ruling. Just one last thing I think you might find relevant. I, this just happened. In the ward litigation, you'll recall, I believe I advised you, there was a 45-day order that the zoning board had to take further proceedings consistent with the land court's decision. It's a testament that maybe things are being negotiated more in good faith now because I'm happy to report that we, I filed a motion to stay that part of the order. And the, the private parties actually reached agreement. The plaintiff in the lawsuit was satisfied with the co-defendant, co-defendant to us, the property owner's representation, that they were going to refrain from short-term rentals during the pendency of the appeal. So right now, the town is not under the gun in terms of any existing court order or potentially being in contempt or being inconsistent across the island with regard to enforcement. So you are in a very good place if you want to undertake some type of proactive approach to make sure or to do your best to make sure that whatever's presented at the next town meeting, whether it be a special town meeting or the annual, is something that will pass and it will moot the litigation. And hopefully, you know, again, it would occur before, you know, I won't comment on the litigation, but if it, obviously, if it occurs before any appeals court ruling on the appeal, we would file a motion to dismiss the appeal as moot.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to Penny and then I'll go to you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Penny Di.
I'll go to them after. Thank you.
Okay. Just a couple of things. By its very nature, mediation is non-binding. And I think that's important to remember here. I would suggest, when you're saying who might serve as mediators, I think it's really important that it's somebody, it's made up of people that are of this community, that live here, that vote here, and that live here year-round. And lastly, the stakes are very different now than they were even three months ago. So yes, we've tried to mediate before. I think Judge Vey has given this community, this is the third opportunity to make this solvable. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I'll go to Mike Hurley. I'll go to you in a second, John, Mike Hurley, and then to Mr. Giorgio. And then I'll come over.
Mike Hurley, Six Salty Way. I'll just make one comment. I appreciated the opportunity to read Attorney Reed's intended warrant draft, which really kind of takes our situation and makes it untenable. But he referred to having a group of varied, people of varied interests in the group submitting to the dialogue, which led him to put this together. I never even heard anything about it, or was I invited to, to weigh in on the thing? And I just feel that there's some other group out there that's out to get me. Now, that's a little bit immature and childish, but we need to build trust here to get, to get to the right solution. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Giorgio?
Thanks, Matt. I just wanted to point out, in tandem with what George was saying, people need to bear in mind that if you are going forward with a November 4th special town meeting, at least a tentative date, I think you'll find in the timeline that, that the town manager will prepare, that there will be a deadline for the submission of citizen articles. But just be, but you have to remember that at town meeting, any group, any person can make a motion that is different than what is in the printed article, right? Subject only to the determination by the moderator that it's within the scope. So moving forward with that schedule would not necessarily preclude a mediation process. Because as I said, if, if the group came up with a solution that everyone could live with, well, that, a different motion than what's, than what's printed in the warrant articles could potentially be made at town meeting.
All right, thank you. Mr. Peel?
Yes. My concern with, well, one, even going to a special town meeting, and two, mediation is, one, you know, I think Mr. Lowell said it a few town meetings ago, you know, there's a lot of distrust in that town meeting room. You know, when we get in there, there's a lot of distrust from the residents of the town. And if we do mediation, something that's behind closed doors, that doesn't have the transparency of, say, a work group or something, in such a short timeline, I think a lot of people in this town are going to have a problem trusting. And so that's, that's one fear I have. And two, I also kind of feel like mediation is going to be hard until people that do have stakes in it, depending on how this, you know, Judge Vey and all of this plays out, until we start seeing some enforcement, until people feel like there is, there are stakes involved, that they can't just do what they want and still get away with it, even if they're breaking the rules, that they have no reason to negotiate. They have no reason to come do it. So let's throw out all these articles and vote everything down because that's what they probably want. And so we really, I, you know, I don't keep hammering away at, at holding people accountable, but it's, that's really, I think, what's going to force people to the table here is that they need to understand that there are things at stake and there are penalties, you know, so.
Well, I'll answer part of that for all. Is right now the town is attempting to hire for that? They've have, they are improving. It's, you know, it's moving along, maybe not as fast as some people want and as well as some people want or the direction some people want. But I think, you know, the direction is to improve and to get someone hired. And to do that, as I said a couple meetings ago, you can't climb every mountain at once. You know, I think we've got to really have to climb this mountain. I think we have to get the zoning sorted. And then we'll have, we'll have clarity on how to enforce. And, you know, and some of the enforcement hopefully will happen before then, but it'll be a lot clearer how we're enforcing in the future. That's how I view it. If any board members want to speak up on that, on that issue, they can, but.
Unfortunately, the sequence of events is not entirely in our control. And so I have a crazy idea that we set a fairly short deadline and we have groups that we ask people to submit an expression of interest in participating in mediation. And I suggest that groups that have formed, I band together and express said interest as a group from a perspective with the idea that they would have a person appointed from their perspective. And we see what comes up. And, I mean, I feel like we agended this tonight to get a sense of whether or not people are interested in mediation. I'm not getting a lot of really warm and fuzzy vibes about the idea. So our options are, people come to the table with a professional mediator, which is not what the Short Term Rental Work Group was. I cannot stress this enough. I'm a trained mediator. It is not the same process. That was a facilitated conversation among groups. Mediation is very different. It plays out differently. The mediator takes a much more active role in, sometimes the groups are put in separate rooms and they're shuttling, and it's, it's a, it's a completely different process.
And they ask for all your information upfront?
And, and you submit a proposal in advance so they know where you're coming from, so they know where the differences are between the groups. It is a completely, entirely different process. So don't throw this out because you think we've done this. What we have done is showed up at town meeting with four, five, six competing articles, and nothing has happened. I am desperate for this community to try to do something different. And I think this alternative is viable. I think people are, are saying they don't want it because they're afraid. I did divorce mediations and people were very afraid to go in the room and they came out in agreement at the end. And I, I think, as far as public process, the public process has failed us. I think the opportunity to go into a room and say what you think honestly and say, okay, I am really willing to give this if you give that, leads to something that no one is bound to. People can walk away and say, I'm out. This, you know, this is too far for me one way or the other. But maybe something, maybe some middle ground that's acceptable to enough of these constituencies that formed can get us across the finish line at town meeting. And, and otherwise, my, my feeling is, if this isn't a process, we schedule a town meeting because somebody's going to call it anyway and we do the same freaking thing all over again. And if that's what everybody wants, have at it. But there's nothing we can do as a board unless you all in the community are willing to sit down with each other and iron this out.
Charity? Ms. Menz?
I will not slam my hand on the podium. I just wanted to make a couple of points. I raised my hand that I would participate, but that was conditional on the fact that there would be a mediation if, if that's what you wanted to do. I agree with Matt Peel that I don't think the community is going to warm to the idea of people sitting in a room, no media, no information, nothing whatsoever about what is going on and what is being discussed. And I don't know whether you, let's say somebody does call a special town meeting. Is this process going to go on concurrently with that? And then, of course, if you start a mediation, if something should pass, then all of that is wasted. But the other thing I wanted to point out is, having been through this quite a bit now, when we did the subcommittee last, just about this time last year, we had six weeks. We had three meetings a week, sometimes more. We probably didn't get to a compromise article because we had a deadline. And only Matt and I are in this room tonight who participated in that subcommittee. And it was not arranged in a way that was rigorous or had some kind of fundamental organizational context. It was just bring these people together who have articles and see if they can sit down and work this out. It was very different. It was too fast. And you had some people trying to lobby the town council, saying, you know, that they thought that this should be this way, this should be the other way. But that failed because of the way it was constructed and the way the timeframe ran for us to try to have something done. But, you know, if you do a media, if you do decide to do that, I think Nantucket Neighborhoods First would be willing or interested in participating.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Atherton and then I'll go to Mr. Reed.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
My observation here is that I, I think the select board and the planning board need to pay attention to the solution brought forward by Arthur Reed or any other solution that develops and not call a special town meeting until you are prepared to have some combined agreement amongst the parties in our elected officials. Now, if someone wants to call a special town meeting with whatever numbers, they're free to do so. And I don't think we can stop that. And I don't think you should be put in a position of calling a special town meeting when you haven't gone through what I would think is an appropriate analytical, open discussion of what's a good possibility to reach a consensus is agreed to. Otherwise, we're all rushing to an end game that is just like it used to be. So just to reiterate simply, I don't think the board should rush to a special town meeting. You can wait for an annual town meeting. This is going to take a long time to really reach consensus because it's clear tonight there is not consensus. And if someone wants to proceed, as I said, with a special town meeting, that's their risk. And hopefully, the citizens will respond and simply say, no, thank you. Thanks for listening to me. Appreciate your discussion.
All right, thank you. Mr. Reed?
Thank you. I'm not here tonight to present the draft article that I prepared that's been in circulation this week. Clearly, that's not what we're here for tonight. And I simply wanted to call, and by the way, that's not by any means a final draft of any proposal. It's, it's, it's to put some ideas out into circulation because I think there's the clear need for there to be a consensus proposal, however we reach that. And that's an attempt based upon various input that I've received from a lot of different people in terms of what I thought might be a middle-of-the-road position to take. Be that as it may, I think that the concept of mediation in this situation, with all due respect, is flawed. I, I really think that in a mediation situation, you necessarily have to have all stakeholders participating. And if they can reach a settlement, then it really is a binding, not binding, but it's a final settlement of, of the situation. Unfortunately, the stakeholders are however many people show up at town meeting that night. And obviously, we're not going to have all of them participating in a mediation session. And therefore, I just don't see how it's going to accomplish anything. I do think that there is the need to have, I know that the workshop the last time didn't result in the passage of an article, but I do think that there is going to need to be an attempt to work out through the planning board process, the planning board hearing process, and possibly also with some other meetings to take place in order to try to hammer it out, some attempt to come up with a solution that everybody can live with. Because right now, we're dealing with two quite disparate alternatives with, I think, very few people in the middle. There may be a solution that's in the middle. But I think it's obvious that the population in Nantucket is on one side of the spectrum or the other, very much like politics in America today. And if we can't reach some compromise between these, between these extremes, nothing is going to pass. And we essentially have one alternative in which the, essentially, the existing land court decision winds up being sustained by the appeal court and becomes binding precedent. And on the other hand, that the appeals court considers the case and rules completely in the opposite direction and determines that short-term rentals are just rentals rather than being in a separate category and that they're permitted in all districts as residential use. And then you have the third range of alternatives, which is everything in between. And that includes such things as every case is decided on a case-by-case basis in a very fact-sensitive situation, which results in endless litigation. Clearly, there needs to be a resolution. Clearly, people need to come together on this. Clearly, that, that there needs to be an effort to develop a consensus. And if we can't do that, I think we're going to be having this argument for many more years. And if we can't do that, I think we're going to be having this argument for many more years. I think we're going to be having difficulties and legal difficulties and problems for the community on an ongoing basis. So I really think, I'm really prepared to commit some of my time to try to work this out for there to be a reasonable solution that people can live with. The article that I drafted, is that what I would like to see? No, it's not. It differs in many respects from what I would like to see. But that's not the objective here. The objective is to have something that perhaps nobody is happy with. And that's sometimes the sign of a good compromise or a good settlement. So I would hope that you would take all of that into consideration in connection with how we proceed on this. However you handle it, I'm very happy to participate in the process.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Virginia Vidoni. I've never done this before, so I'm really scared. But I've been involved in this for five years. We have been here for 29 years and we do rent our house short-term. And we are also good friends with the Keiths. You know Ralph Keith, who left this island a broken man, sad and really, really upset what happened to him. And the Grapes is an awful thing to be under the threat of litigation terrorism. And we are. We all, all our group have rented our houses and lived here for many, many years. And it is not the island that it was when we came here. Of course, if I came when you came, I mean, you've lived here, but I would have a broken heart, too. I see how things have changed, but we love it here. We absolutely love it here. And if it wasn't for the kids that we take care of back in Pennsylvania, we would have lived here because that was our goal. But you are starving us and we have so little faith, so little faith after watching what happened twice. We watched every single meeting, every single hour. And it's devastating to get to the end of something you think, okay, we can live with that, we can survive that. And then to find out people walk out and it's the same people. It's the same people. So how can we trust? We are stakeholders. No, we don't live here full-time, but we are here four to five months a year. And we vote in PA because they need our vote. But I'm telling you, how can we have any faith when we are scared to death of being sued almost all the time because we've been outspoken? So I understand you are stuck between a rock and a hard place. We're stuck between a rock and a hard place. We have little trust and there are big, 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 there's lots of scary stuff happening. So I just wanted to let you know, I don't know what the solution is, but I wish we could just pass a zoning article that would allow short-term rentals. I don't know, you know, I only know people who follow the rules. I only know people who rent to families, good families, the same families, year after year. And you will starve us out of here. And we're good people. I mean, we're not criminals, we're not investors. We are good people. And this really makes us sick. We are up for nights scared, and it's not right. So that's the end of my story. Thank you for letting me speak. And I know you are working so hard. It makes me so sad to see what you guys go through. But I'm telling you, we have so little faith and trust. And if you do this behind closed doors, and we were not invited to any of these discussions, nobody asked anybody from Nantucket Together to be in any of the discussions.
All right, well, this is why we're, that's partly why we're here tonight, is to say how, is to say how.
How can we be in mediation if we're threatened of, someone's threatening to sue us?
Well, I think what I'm, what I'm, what I, how I look at it is, I think that Nantucket Together should be involved. I think it should be involved with Arthur if he's doing this with other groups. I think that if we end up with mediation soon or through the planning board, you know, if the planning board hearings end up requiring mediation at that point, I would hope that you're, you know, the Nantucket Together has a representative. I think we have to be careful, you know, that one side of the, I think there's like two or three sides here. I don't think there's just one, it's not just two sides, it's like three or four sides. And so I think that there needs to be representatives to those different sides without any one side stacked. And I think people need to.
How can a group, how can our group feel safe knowing we can, we are under threat of litigation? How can our group possibly mediate?
Well, I think, you know, I'm trying to answer that. I think if people are in a, I try to speak to everybody and if people, and sometimes people don't agree with me, but I think if everybody is speaking honestly in a room and are working in good faith to find a solution that works, that isn't ideal, but that works for, you know, I think that's what we need to find. And we're trying to find that. We don't have that. We clearly haven't had that yet. But I can say, I don't know anyone here, you know, and anyone in any of the groups that don't want that to happen. I know that, you know, like the other sides all want to find something, too. We're all in this where it's not ideal. As Arthur said, this could be decided, you know, one way really badly or another way really badly, or it could run for five or six years with people, litigating people, and none of us want that. So how do we, what we're trying to say is, how do we bring people together?
Are our neighbors spying on us to see who's in our house? I mean, who wants that?
Yeah, in a second, Don, I'll get you.
Hi, Peter Halli. I'm a longtime summer resident here and I'm currently the chair of the Advisory Committee of Non-Voting Taxpayers. And I just want to make two simple points. First is, everybody seems to be in agreement, the stakeholders should be involved in working on a solution. And the non-voting taxpayers are a stakeholder, perhaps the biggest stakeholder in some sense in this whole debate. And so I would ask you, as you move forward, whether it's a mediation or some other form of collective action, that you include a representative of non-voting taxpayers. We have a stake, but we don't have a vote. And so that's point number one. Point number two is this, this is a very opportune moment, I think, for the town to come to a solution. And the reason is, the current judgment, which is under appeal, I understand, in this litigation, for the proponents, the individuals who seem to be winners in this now, it's kind of like they stepped on a rake. Because everybody, everybody, whether you're a voting taxpayer, a non-voting taxpayer, is subject to not being able to rent their house if they need to. And we just heard from the prior speaker how there are needs. And so I think this is a good time for people to come together and, as Arthur said, to get to a middle compromise. Our interest as non-voting taxpayers is that that compromise not include discrimination against the non-voters. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I'll go to Don and then I'll come over.
This is on, Don Hill, citizen of Nantucket, voter. These are the seasonal residents that we do not want to lose, some, listening to what Virginia said. This needs to be codified and there needs to be compromise on this. It's got to be simple and it's got to work for what has been historically done here. And I just, I really hope that everybody can talk, whether it's through mediation or just as citizens, seasonal or year-round of Nantucket. So I just, I don't know whether mediation's the right process, but I just urge that we get this codified so that the community doesn't have to live under all of this uncertainty of being scared to be sued by their neighbor because that's not what Nantucket is and that's, that's not why probably anyone in this room ever wanted to be here.
Thank you. Ms. Baird?
Thank you, Kathy Baird. So just a couple of things. I think just to follow up a little bit on what Virginia's saying, it's very hard to go into any kind of negotiation or mediation, really, when you do have a gun pointed to your head, which is, which is what we have. And especially for those of us who own property here but cannot vote. So one of the things I was wondering, I was curious about and listening to all of the testimony and so forth in the Ward case, was since the town submitted testimony that on an inadvertent technical amendment to zoning back in 2015 was where the use, the definition of the word use had the words rental and lease removed from it. It wasn't intentional to say you can't rent or you can't lease. It was just STRs weren't a thing then. It was just an inadvertent thing. So it got removed. It was in a technical article that nobody debated and it passed. And that's basically what the judge is ruling on, is that there is nothing in our zoning that protects any kind of rentals. So if it's just a simple amendment, I mean, why wouldn't the town itself, since it's the planning board and the town's article that took that out there, just put it back or propose it to be put back? Now we're back to 2015 and now we can move forward and make whatever regulations are needed, but at least we're back to, okay, let's fix that and move forward. Especially since at the hearing on Friday, town council was making the case to Judge Vey that the town of Nantucket and its economic situation would be severely harmed through the enforcement of this ruling across the board. So the town is saying that in court, but not saying it in public. And I think that if the town were to really get behind, okay, there was a little inadvertent error, let's fix that, let's pass that. We realize that we cannot allow the ruling to stand as it is because it will be harmful to many, not just renters and short-term rental owners. And just then move forward from that. Just let's get that behind us and now put whatever regulations that voters feel are necessary or the town feels is necessary into future bylaws. But just get, we have a gun to our head, we have a ruling, let's focus on that and not all of the other little nuances, oh, should it be seven days or how many, what's the season? Let's let that go and just get this one put to bed this fall with a special town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board want to answer that? Yeah, I can, it isn't, even if the whole town wanted to do it, it's a change of the zoning and it will take a two-thirds vote.
It's worth by 65 votes, so.
Well, it could, but it also, I think some people, people, you have to be careful not to read that as it's going only this direction. People were held off and didn't speak that were in favor of Fritz's articles. They wanted a positive vibe going into his article. I know plenty of people who did that. And I think there's enough of a block from both sides to block a two-thirds. And so I think, you know, things are very different from 2015 till 2025. And the state has put, has allowed us to put short-term rental rules in. The island is very different areas that we never would have imagined would be under threat and be, you know, and islanders would be being bought out and, you know, et cetera has happened. And so I think it's very, a very different thing. And I think that, you know, as much as it would be great to be able to push a, you know, a do-over button and go back to 2015, I think that, I don't think town meeting would vote for that. I think that is enough of a block. So I do think it has, we have to sort of move forward and find something that town meeting will accept. So that's my take on it. Someone else can correct me if they think I'm wrong.
Matt, if I may, I completely agree. What was a technical amendment in 2015 has a whole lot of weight, different kind of weight today, so.
Thank you.
Good evening, Happy Awards Silver Street. I just want to read a quick statement from my attorney in response to something that's been said tonight. "The court did not grant the town's motion to stay. Instead, the court amended the judgment to state that the Grapes may not short-term rent unless and until the appeals court overturns the land court decision or the bylaw is changed." She goes on to say, "But let me be clear, the court did not grant the town's motion to stay the judgment and the Grapes may not short-term rent." Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, can I just clarify?
Please do.
Because I argued the motion, I filed the motion. I didn't say that the court allowed the motion. In fact, I tried to report in a positive way that people were being cooperative, that the Grapes had proposed a solution not to short-term rent and it appeared to be satisfactory to the plaintiff. So I just want to clarify for the board that I did not say that the court allowed the motion to stay, but the court did enter relief so that there is no issue concerning the need to either have further proceedings pursuant to the court's order or to take any enforcement action based on the substantive ruling in the land court case. So I just want to be clear for you on that.
And what I take from what you're saying, Mr. Bucci, is if we can find a path forward ourselves, that will help us with the judge and with future decisions. And the sooner we find that, the better. Am I correct in that? I'm trying to put it in words I can understand.
Well, it has nothing to do with that judge at this point. It would have to do with whether or not it moots the case or not so that we don't have to go forward with the appeal. So in other words, if you enact a bylaw that resolves the issues that were disputed in that case and they're likely to be disputed in others if you don't resolve it, we would then seek to dismiss the appeal as moot.
Here's another question. If we have a group together that has, that has found, you know, a compromise and it seems like it's a fairly supported compromise, how does that help you in any of your conversations in the current potential litigation?
No, it would, it would be irrelevant. Because the case, if it goes forward to the appeal, we've already ordered the transcript of proceedings, the appeal is underway. When the appeal gets entered and the appeals court will file a brief, the case will be argued. But there is no further engagement with the court outside of that context.
All right, thank you. Ms. Baird?
Matt, just, can I just ask one question through to town council? Would that be allowed? Okay. It occurred to me in looking through the court rulings that since the language was changed in 2015, and I do understand it's a completely different time now, and it is zoning, does that mean if you were renting your home as a vacation rental before that was changed, that you would have a pre-existing condition, that you would allow to be, continue to rent?
Yes, it's an interesting issue. It would be, the issue would be whether it's a pre-existing lawful, non-conforming use. I think I would prefer to not answer that question off the cuff and that we would give a legal opinion on that if you have to. I have to, and not to evade the question, but I have to emphasize the fact that those questions are not live questions right now because there is no obligation on the town to take enforcement under the substantive ruling in the land court's judgment. And that's no disrespect meant to the court. It's just meant that we filed the appeal, the case will be resolved on appeal, so there's not any type of live issue as to whether, you know, that ruling precludes people from short-term renting their residence. And it also precludes having to answer the question if somebody has a lawful, non-conforming use in the event that that judgment and the reasoning in there became binding. And I, you know, I just wanted to follow up a mess comment about, this is the problem sometimes with warrant articles, and I don't mean to intrude on areas outside, you know, legal issues, but that's, that's the risk and the uncertainty about just kind of rolling it again about different articles being presented to the person presenting the article. It makes all the sense in the world. Let's just make this simple amendment that will solve the issue. But then you might have opponents to that that don't want to solve the issue in that manner. So, you know, I just wanted to reiterate that point that, and to Arthur Reed's point, who knows what the possible result could be from an appeals court case? It may, you know, open a whole bunch of other issues that another group may be unhappy about. So, you know, again, it, the thing I can express to the town as a litigator is, to the extent that you can eliminate risk on litigation by taking a matter into your own hands, you are better off from a risk management perspective. And that's just litigation and the way it works.
All right, thank you. Mr. Concott, and then I think we go to the board and, and I'm not sure what we're going to do, but we'll go to the board, so.
Yes, I, Rod Focot, 18 Nichols Road, Tom Rivers, for 42 years. I really appreciate this discussion because I think it's, it's, the problem is so nasty that it's been extremely civil and it appears that everybody in the room really wants it. that it's been extremely civil and it appears that everybody in the room really wants a solution. I've followed this thing since 2019, 2018, and at that time, I think the issues began with, we have noise problems and we have corporations and pure investors coming on the island to, and that, and that is changing the nature and the uniqueness of Nantucket's short-term rental history. And so we solved those two, I thought, with a series of bylaws, and yet the problem continues to go on. And I understand why we're having so much difficulty with this discussion is because I don't think there's, since the short-term rental work group and the bylaws that were passed that year, I don't think there's ever been a definition of what problem are we trying to solve today? What outcome do we want? Do we want fewer short-term rentals? Do we want longer short-term rentals? Do we want to spread them out across the year? Do we want to not let seasonal owners rent? I just am a complete loss for four years as to what problem we're trying to solve. Now, of course, I know what the problem we're trying to solve immediately, and that is the judge's ruling. So I think before we can try to figure out who are the disparate interested parties, whether we should do mediation, by the way, which I would be strongly against, my experience with mediation is it works great when you have two parties in a contract, you have 100% of the interested parties. So I agree with Mr. Reed's comments. But I think before we try to address this problem, the select board, zoning board, whoever, somehow we need to get the town to come together and say, here is what we are trying to accomplish in very specific terms. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Does the board have any other thoughts? Suggestions? Libby?
Hi.
Nope.
Well, I said I'd listen to everybody. I'm, I sort of wished I hadn't voted for November 4th, maybe December 4th. So I don't think we have enough time. I would like Arthur just to go off with everybody and come back in a, in a month with a proposition. I don't know if he can do that or not. There's no really other option except to continue to negotiate. There's no option. I guess we have to do mediation, but I don't think we have enough time to do it right. I'm still, I'm still getting there, sir. Okay?
Yeah, no, I understand. Tom?
Matt, may I ask George and John a question?
Yes.
George or John, on mediation, so for the parties who participate in mediation, would that be set by the mediator? Would the mediator get a brief on what their remit is and there'd be a universe of potential parties and they would select from that group? How would that work? If we do go down this road, I'd be worried about, you know, one of us selecting the parties and then it, like, that's just not going to work. Anyway, can you just fill, maybe fill in a little bit on how that, how the mechanics of that work, please?
Yeah, I'll take that one, John. No, you, I mean, it would be a select board sponsored mediation. So you would engage, you would engage the mediator, you know, and then the mediator would send out an agreement, but the mediator won't select the participants. You would select that. And I, and I do want to note, yes, this is thinking outside the box a little bit. It's not a contract case. It's not a personal injury case where somebody's looking for a million dollars because they lost the use of their left arm and you try to reach an agreement between the two exact stakeholders. It would just be a, sort of a variation on what you've done already with the working group meetings, all the work you've done to date, the fact that now you do have a court ruling that nobody seems to be happy with, and you want to take control of it, take, follow up on all the work that has been done, and maybe you would finally get to the point where you can take it over the finish line, that you would get reasonable compromise from differing parties on that. But absolutely, you would be the one selecting the participants for the mediation. And then they, they would then be signing off on the mediation agreement once that's adopted, but the mediator is not going to have any involvement in that. We would advise the mediator who the participants are, and then there would be a schedule set up, and then there would be like deadlines for prefilings with the mediator before that process goes forward. So I do want to emphasize that if you have a problem with that process, then definitely you have a problem with mediation because you would be the one selecting the participants.
Tom, as a follow-up?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to kind of level set on that and kind of get the, the bottom line. Thank you, George. So I'm kind of thinking that, Brooke, you want to go? And, did you have something?
I have a lot of thoughts and I apologize to everyone for slamming the table. It's just been really frustrating. I don't see a path forward. I think we just keep doing the same thing until we circle the drain and something happens. I'm, I'm at a loss. We've, we've suggested something, an alternative. It's out of the box. It's different. I believe there's a chance that it would work, but there doesn't seem to be
Trust.
Trust in, in any process, public, private, anything at this point. And I think as long as we are living in this space, that as much as, there's a part of me that just says, let's not have a special town meeting and see what happens because I think the group that calls a town meeting that has to happen in August is probably not going to be very popular with the community. I'm, I'm really, I'm stymied. I don't know, I don't know what we can do as a board. I really don't see a path forward. I was hopeful, but I'm not now.
I have a question for George, Mr. Pucci. How, how long would it take to set this up? If we, like, if we decided, if someone called the meeting and the planning board started to have hearings and we realized that we're three distinct groups and we wanted to pull it together, would it be possible to do it at that point under this timeframe?
It wouldn't be possible if some, if you're forced into an August town meeting, that's for sure. Later, special town meeting, I mean, ideally, it would be annual town meeting and you would take that time to work on the process. Again, if you wanted to engage in that and see if something came out of that. I think the process could work if you were interested in doing it with that timeframe that Brooke had earlier mentioned about the fall town meeting. It could be done. I want to be very clear with you, too. I've been in touch with the Real Estate Bar Association. I've mediated with them before on very, very difficult cases. They have some highly skilled retired land court judges in particular who specialize in zoning and are very skilled mediators. So I spoke to them in advance and I said, you know, I'm not engaging you, but this is under consideration for the select board. If they, if they want to do it, can we expedite a schedule? And they assured me that we would be able to expedite a schedule for August for, you know, for that process to go forward. So I, you know, that, that would be, if you were to tell me that you're interested in engaging it and following up and getting an actual proposal from them, that, that would be the organization that I would be recommending to you, that would be the mediator.
Just in a follow-up, because Brooke had a, a thought earlier, was talking about, you know, various groups would have to bring documentation, they'd have to fill in a form. What would, what type of documentation would they require?
The way typically mediation, yeah, the way typically a mediation would work, and again, this is thinking outside the box because it's not your normal case where you just have two parties that are trying to get in the middle somewhere. Typically, what they will do, the mediator will send out a schedule and there will be a deadline for a submit, a written submission to the mediator in advance of the mediation. Often, the mediator will ask, will, will allow the parties to submit confidential submissions to the mediator so that the mediator can see it and digest it in advance so that the parties are not, they're just providing it to the mediator to kind of educate the mediator as to where the parties stand. So typically, it would be something along those lines, that there would be written submissions on the part, on the part, the participant's position in the matter, and they would put that into writing and it would submit it to the mediator in advance of the mediation. And then at the time of the mediation, the mediator would go through with the parties, how the process is going to work and that he or she has, you know, written, read the submissions. Mediators will often also, they may ask questions in advance of the session if it can help them get more up to speed so that they can get underway, you know, quite quickly in terms of being up to speed on what the disparate issues are before them. And then, and then when that process goes forward, like I said, that, that, the, the session itself with the mediator, party, the participants would sign off on an agreement that the substance of those communications are confidential. But, you know, again, if a document comes out of it that's agreed to, it would become a public document and the, the parties that are endorsing that document would also be identified in public. So it would be, you know, if somebody ended up not agreeing, was a participant, it would be pretty easy to tell and you'd probably hear from them at a town meeting about why they're opposed to what came from that process. So I do have to emphasize, there's a degree of confidentiality to it, but there's also a great degree of transparency as to what the result of that was. And people can also be well-advised of how many sessions there were, how long they were, who the participants were. So it's not like things can be done in secret or entirely confidentially in that process. It's just that substance of the negotiations in the session with the mediator that would be confidential.
All right. Thank you. No, the reason I, and I'll go to you in a second. The reason I'm asking is because I think that if the right questions were asked, if we, you know, if in the future, in a week or two, or we decide to do, if the right questions are asked, that itself would sort of enable the mediator or the mediator and us to pick to make sure that one side or the other didn't stack it. You know, if there was a submission that was required and, you know, a bunch of, a bunch of questions, and this is what I believe and why, then you, we could somewhat assure that we would, you know, we would have different views, I would hope.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I do have to make an editorial comment. Yes, this is a divided country and all of this, but one has to assume a degree of good faith and the select board is working on this hard. Why in the world would you select participants that are stacked one way or another? You're not doing it to, for the fun of it or for an academic exercise. You're trying to do it so that you get a reasonably compromised article that withstand a reasonable chance of getting the 75% vote, so this, you know, the two-thirds vote. So, you know, I, and that goes to who's selecting the participants. Again, it's very clear who those participants would be and you're obviously, if you're going to do it, you would want to have a reasonably diverse group that represents the various interests that might want to be a proponent for an article at town meeting. So, you know, I, I know it's a controversial issue and there's a lot at stake for people, but I do want to remind the town that, you know, you do things in the right way. You engage council to litigate positions that are the result of your majority votes. And if you go forward with this process, you're certainly going to be doing it in a way that is, you know, in good faith to try to get to a successful result.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. I'm going to take one more from the public. Ms. Vee?
Yeah, I just wanted to know from
Oh, Bobby, sorry.
The mediation point, that what sort of the goal of the outcome? Is that to have a, and I'm just talking the process, is that to have a citizens' warrant article from the parties who are there? Is it to have an article that you ask the planning board to support? You know, what is really the goal there? I think that's maybe what you need to ask yourselves because just having five citizens that came out of mediation that the town paid for, and by the way, the town is being sued. So when you bring up good faith, Mr. Pucci, I just want to make sure you understand why some people here, and I've listened to a lot of them over the years at FinCom meetings, you know, there, there really isn't some good faith when you have a lawsuit hanging over your head. But again, that's why my concern is what is the outcome? Is planning board, is select board, who's going to sponsor this article, which I think is what you want to get to? That's it.
I mean, I do have to comment, my, and again, you're the decision maker on this, but, you know, what my recommendation for mediation was that type of thing, that you would have representatives participating in the mediation and that you ended up with a proposal that would be supported by both the planning board and the select board.
Okay.
So that, that would
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. Ideally, it would be planning board, select board, ZBA, FinCom. Hopefully, it would be something that was broadly supported. So we go to town meeting with something broadly supported. We haven't done that yet. We've gone to town meeting with things that had three different polls on them. You know, we have articles that had, were being polled three different directions. And so I, it needs to really be, you know, find a way to go one direction.
Matt, there's one thing, too, of relevance that, you know, should be recognized and probably even the board needs to be reminded of it. The fact that the select board supported litigating in defense of the zoning board's decision doesn't necessarily reflect even the opinion of the select board on the substantive issues. In other words, you voted as a majority that, that you were going to support the ZBA's decision and we were going to litigate that on behalf of the town. But there's even disparate opinions amongst board members themselves on, you know, the issue of short-term rentals. So it's not even something that the board has been able to, you know, express support as a majority of the board or a unanimous consensus. So you've never really been given that opportunity to look at an article to say, we support this, this is supported by the select board, supported by FinCom, is sponsored by the planning board. So that, you know, again, that is something, just trying to think of a possible way to get you there.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Georgia, then, oh, actually, yeah, Mr. Georgia, then I'll go to Mr. DeCosta.
Thank you, Matt. George, I'd like to ask you a question. Perhaps you can explain this to the public and to the board, but one of the, one of the problems that I see here is in the past, proposals that have been put forth that do raise significant legal issues, whether it's the commerce clause issue, whether it's what can be accomplished through zoning. And so, George, my question is, wouldn't the mediator, one of the things a mediator could do would be to take various parties into the room on a confidential basis and say, you really, that's really problematic if you pursue, from a legal standpoint, if you pursue a particular kind of bylaw. So the mediator would, in essence, perhaps facilitate in the narrowing of the issues in terms of what should be in a bylaw and what should not be. So I do think that that would be potentially something that, I mean, town council can render all the opinions in the world, right? But if you have an independent mediator say, no, you really can't go down that road for these reasons and, you know, this is the law on zoning it, et cetera, et cetera, it might narrow, it might serve to narrow the issues, which
Yeah, I agree with that. I think it's a very good point. I think it's something, you know, that the board will want to take into consideration here. It gives you the opportunity not only to have the mediator possibly convince a proponent of, you know, the, the Florida in a particular legal issue, but it also allows more of an analysis of that, that bylaw provision. You know, one, one thing that you want to try to avoid is, you know, piecemeal amendments. You know, somebody, say they, they pull it off and they, they get a warrant article approved, the two-thirds vote, but then you end up with certain inconsistencies with the general bylaw or you have a commerce clause issue like John is pointing out. the general bylaw, or you have a Commerce Clause issue, like John is pointing out. You know, if you at least have some type of formal process to further vet those issues, it would certainly benefit the process. I mean, as, you know, John has lived with this for a long time. I'm living it with it now with the litigation, and it's something that, this is an issue that would benefit from, with all the work that you've put into it to date, all the parties to really come up with something, you know. And again, I know people say, "Oh, compromise, it means somebody's unhappy." Well, reasonably unhappy. A compromise meaning that you come up with something sound that people can live with, who don't love short-term rentals or who do rely on them. Something that everyone can live with, but that also is integrated with your zoning bylaw as a whole, with the general bylaw provisions, with enforcement provisions, registration, all of that. So it, you know, it gives you one more chance to really do this right, which obviously you want to do.
All right. Thank you. Mr. DeCosta?
Thank you, Matt.
Do you have the solution for us?
I just want to start off by saying that my day started at 3:00 a.m. this morning, and I literally just walked off the boat to come here. I can't believe you're still going through this, but I'm glad you are. So if I start to ramble, I apologize. When I was a kid, there was a movie about the life and times of Davy Crockett. I remember watching it, and I loved it. And one of the things in that movie was that Davy got elected to be a congressman for, I think it was Tennessee, and he was off on some escapade, and while he was gone, Washington tried to push something through that he was adamantly against. And his allies filibustered until he was able to get there with his coonskin cap on, on a horse, to change their mind. I feel like I'm Davy Crocker right now. I swear to God, because two weeks ago, I got a call from Carl Giallemi asking me if I would be interested in sitting down with a cross-section of people from this island to try to come up with an article that we could all live with. Not that we all would like, but that we could all live with. I said, "Absolutely, Carl. I'm always willing to talk." You know, "Let's try to figure out a way that we can all figure out this problem." And in my mind, the best solution is when no one likes it, because that means that we've got something that everyone agrees on, to some level. Unbeknownst to me, I find out now that we have an article that's been written by their group through Arthur Reed, that we're now getting pushed through on a special town meeting, and now we're talking about mediation. And I don't even quite, I kind of understand how mediation is, but I'm not sure how you're going to pick who's going to be on this board. And it's frustrating.
Were you involved with the formation of that other article?
No, no, no. I was asked to be part of a group, and I said, "Yeah." I said, "Obviously, my schedule's busy, but I can do it in the evenings after 6:00." To my best of my knowledge, other people that I know were contacted by them, no one ever had any input into this article. Now, I have been approached by other people who want me to put an article, which is basically similar to 66 through, under my name, because they think that my name has some ability to magically get an article passed. I don't know where they came up with that ludicrous idea. And I have said that I would be more than happy to sit down, but again, I'm not putting my name on anything that I don't have a chance to vet. It's very difficult to do this kind of comprehensive vetting and arguments, or not so much arguments, but negotiations, this time of year, when a lot of the people that are involved in this are literally working their tails off. And I don't know if this special town meeting can be put off. You know, I personally thought that we should have this in January, to give everyone time in the fall to really sit down in October, November, December, when things slow down, and come up with an article, one article, not 14 articles, or four articles, or seven articles, one article that we could all talk about. And I've looked at Arthur's article, and there's a lot of things in there that I agree with, and there's some that I don't. And it's a good starting point, but it's not the article that we should take to a special town meeting. And I'm going to bring in 14 amendments, and somebody else is going to bring in another 14 amendments, and before we know it, everyone's so confused that everyone's going to vote no on it. Do we really want to waste the town's money and time to do that? And I don't know where I'm, I tried to listen to this meeting as much as I could, on the radio, in the truck, on the radio, in the boat, in between. So I don't know where you're all at at it, but that's just my two cents, and I don't, I would like to have a little more chance to have input in this, and I know other people in the community would as well.
All right. Thank you. Brooke?
I think that the idea of mediation is put out there. I think it is perhaps something we should offer. Should the conversations in the community hit a point where they say, "Whoa, we're stuck. We could use some help," but not start anything. And I'm actually sort of inclined not to even schedule a special town meeting because of the timeline. Again, we're pushing a timeline that is unachievable. And I think, again, what I said earlier, it would be unfortunate if a group pushed, forced a town meeting upon the community. I don't think it would serve their interest in terms of securing votes for whatever position they have. And maybe we should encourage everyone to just work on this and try to get it done at annual town meeting, and if they need the help of a trained mediator to get to the finish line on something that can be brought, that has included, actually included everybody in the conversation, not just an email saying, "We'd like you to participate," but not actually having them participate, and see how it plays out.
I'm encouraged a bit by Bobby's comment that there's things that I like, because I think that tells me that there's been movement from ones, you know, I feel like there has been a good faith effort from both, you know, from, you know, sort of act-now side to move toward something that will work for the community. I think that I'm encouraged by that somewhat. And so how do we get, you know, how do we get the, you know, sort of others involved and Bobby involved? Because it really, whether it hap, I agree with you now. I think November may be too soon. We'll have to talk about that next week. But I think, but I also think there's a need to solve this sooner, sooner maybe than next spring, because there are a lot of people who are in limbo right now. And so, you know, and so what's the, the sooner we could get something we could all sort of support, the quicker we could form, have a town meeting that was productive and something positive maybe come out of it. Or hopefully, something positive would come out of it if it was done right. So.
Can I ask town council, oh, I want to ask town council a question. In the event that citizens call a special town meeting, what is, what's the process for setting the warrant? I mean, it's a 45-day period. What is the, what is the actual process for setting the warrant and opportunities for other people to submit different articles, or the select board to submit different articles from, say, the one that that constituency that called the town meeting might support? Does that question make sense to you guys?
If I could handle that question. So, yes, the select board has to call the special town meeting within 45 days. There is absolutely nothing that would prevent the select board from adding additional articles to that warrant. That, the warrant would have to include the, what was in the petition, the warrant article that was in the petition, but you could certainly add additional articles. And anyone, really, who submits a hundred, you know, it's a 200 signatures to call a special. It's 100 signatures for any citizen to include a warrant article on a special town meeting that's already been called, and the select board can certainly add any articles they would like as well.
Malcolm, do you still have a comment?
No, I just, the way I'm thinking now, I will repeat myself. I think November 4th is too early. That was a mistake. I think we're stuck with it, or we can address it a later date. That's just not enough time. And it, I'm comfortable, I'm afraid if we have another group, it's going to interfere with Arthur's group. And I would like Arthur and, or Mr. Reed and Arthur to continue his work. I'm not going to support another group at this time. That's just going to be too complicated, not enough time. And I would strongly encourage this group to rethink that November 4th date. You know, if some citizens want a special town meeting, that's what we're going to have to do, and I predict it's just going to be chaos.
If you're going to, if you're going to, you have to come to the mic, and quick, because I think we're wrapping it up.
I think we've heard it all.
Yeah.
Arthur's group did not include us, those people who have been renting for all these many years. Then, we had not one phone call, not one email, nothing.
I think there's a chance after this meeting for Bobby and others, if that's going to continue, to have their, you know, to reach out.
When you rent for years, excuse me, when you rent for years, like we have, you understand what it takes to rent, the amount, and what we need to survive. It's not like we're starving to death. It's not like we don't have a place to live, and I don't expect you to feel sorry for us. It is our second home, but it is our most beloved home. And so, it seems to me, we should be part of the conversation, right?
All right. Thank you. So, I think we can...
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the vote we had to tentatively schedule November town meeting.
Dawn, do you want to come back? Well, do let, so are we wrapping up this discussion for now?
Yeah, with the encouragement to the parties who are talking to include more people in the conversation.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Matt, I just, I'd say something positive that I see, Matt. I agree with your comment before, that I think, and Mr. Reed said this before, that the article, that the draft article that came is iterative, and it is, it is a discussion. And I think there's some green shoots there, because I think there's some movement. In reading it quickly today when I received it, there is a little bit of movement there. It isn't completely closed off. And there's two different universes, or as Matt said, four different universes of where we're, everyone in this room and beyond is at. But I think, and to Mr. DeCosta's comments, there are some green shoots out there of people wanting to come together to solve this somehow. So I'm a little encouraged. And I agree with, I think George Pucci made a really good comment, that we should assume that people should come in good faith to some kind of mediation. I think assuming the other one is just not, it's not good for civic discourse in civil society. It's just not. And I'm a little bit more open to mediation than I was before. So I don't know where my colleagues are, but if we could come up with a process that makes sense. I agree with Brooke on the, on special town meeting, and I think we're going to discuss that in a moment, but I'm a little bit encouraged from where everybody has been in the last couple of years, based on this discussion.
All right. Over to you, Dawn.
My understanding of the motion was that we were just going to do a timeline for August 6th, then make a decision. So that gives people two weeks to continue with this discussion. My understanding is that there are multiple people who have gathered enough signatures or are close to have gathered enough support to call a special town meeting. So we can always change the date. Maybe we want to pick, I don't know. I don't think you need to reconsider it, because I don't think we really said it.
We haven't said it 100%.
We're just saying, this is the date that would work. Please don't call it and make us do it in 45 days. Right? And hopefully, people will continue to talk, and all of the people in this room and watching will communicate further.
And by the way, you guys can do that all day, every day, in any combination of people, if it's not a group we create.
Yeah.
So have at it, because it's a lot easier for you guys to talk to each other than to, for us to formalize a process.
Yeah, I mean, on mediation, I just don't, I don't think that it's worth the town spending the resources on it right now. I think that this has got to be citizen-driven.
I, if I may?
Yeah.
I think unless we have a broad group of people who are stuck on a couple issues, and they could use some professional help in unsticking the conversation, then I would think there's value in us investing in a process.
Yeah, but I think you need to actually see the articles and who's sponsoring them before...
And what they're stuck on, yeah.
And they need to come to us and ask for help.
Okay.
Mr. Lowell?
I just want to, I just want to say something that's been rattling around in my head for a while about all this. So I'm going to talk about driving on the beach. We used to drive on the beach whenever we wanted, wherever we wanted, at any time, around the island without a sticker. And during the 80s, there was a lot of groups, a lot of people mad about driving on the beach, and they were trying to stop it. And of course, the locals, "The hell, that's never going to happen." Well, there was some problems. Then the Conservation Foundation got stickers first. Town didn't have stickers. Now, everybody's driving on the beach with regulations, but we got to get it legal first. And that's what we're dealing with right now with this. Everybody's been renting for years, just like driving on the beach, for 50, 60 years without a sticker. And we didn't know we needed to get stickers to rent our houses. Thank you.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable if we move on to committee reports?
Yes.
I just have one, that we are starting the development of a survey in regard to our island home, and hopefully, that will be live sometime by the end, towards the end of the summer, to get some more feedback. I'm working with Florencia and Rick on that. And that's all I have. Anybody else?
Civic League met?
Oh, yeah. The Summer Forum went very well on Monday, and I believe it's recorded if people missed it.
And I was encouraged to hear the steamship was talking about putting money into, and maybe they'll talk to crack about some of the changes. That was a positive today.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously.
I'm exhausted.